The meeting will come to order. We'll avoid disruptions in our meeting and we suggest that all the attendees of this International Board of Trustees meeting, the chair requires that all cell phones be turned up or silenced. If you must answer a cell phone, do outside of the room in which you are currently seated for the same reason. Please also be aware of any background noise, no matter how insignificant it may inadvertently be transmitted during the meeting and cause a disruption. As this meeting is being broadcast live on Zoom and recorded to be posted to YouTube later, please make sure that there is an appropriate background visible for the audience on the Zoom call people. Due to the COVID-19 related travel restrictions, this hybrid meeting will be held online by a broadcast Zoom meeting. Any other recording, transmission, or retransmissions of this International Board of Trustees meeting is not authorized. Any violation of this policy may be subjected to legal and/or disciplinary measures. The proprietary rights of our corporation and our members need to be respected. For the start of this meeting, we'll have a moment of silence. Please raise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, led by International First Vice President Eric McHenry. Eric, please begin.
I forgot, I got the exact text, so.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Please be seated. At the June 30th, 2018 meeting of the International Board of Trustees, the Bylaws, Article 8, Section 3 was amended to read, "The proprietary seminar and IBT meeting may be combined for each of the three Boards of Trustees' meetings." The seminar and the IBT meeting have been combined for today. Proposed rules for this hybrid meeting are, any member may speak during this meeting after being recognized by the Chair. Members who will have a chance to be heard, all speakers must give their name and office. Remarks are to be limited to three minutes except for approved by the Chair. Board members are to mute their microphones until recognized by the Chair. Board members who want to ask a question or make a comment are to use the raised hand tool provided on the Zoom. Zoom should remain muted until called upon by the Chair. Once recognized by the Chair, board members are to unmute their microphones, present a question slash comment, and mute their microphones again when they have finished In lieu of an in-person participation, members are able to submit questions or comments to the IBT through an online form, voicemail, or email. Forms, voicemails, and emails need to be submitted before the start of the meeting and were distributed to the IBT. They will be addressed during the appropriate discussion. After each updated report or action item is presented, feedback will be requested from the International Board of Trustees, followed by the Region Vice Presidents. If there are not any questions or comments for the in-person audience or the Zoom audience, discussion will end when the Chair calls for the question and all raised hands will be lowered. Speakers may speak twice on each item, but those who wish to speak a second time must wait until all who want to speak a first time have done so. A yellow card will be held up when the speaker has spoken for two minutes. When three minutes have been used by the speaker, a red card will be held up. As the bell will ring, the speaker will stop. There will be a limit of 20 minutes for discussions on each motion unless the Chair extends the time. If a roll call vote is necessary, the International Recording Secretary will randomly call on board members. Microphones will be unmuted to record the vote and then muted again once the vote is completed. When the Chair calls for the question, only the trustees may vote. If there is no objection, these will be the rules of this meeting. Hearing no objections, these are the rules for this meeting. The Secretary will call the roll.
President Ty Mott.
Present.
First Vice President Eric McHenry.
Present.
Second Vice President Pear Hamquist.
Present.
Third Vice President Karen Fisher.
Present.
Recording Secretary Linda Shelton.
Present.
Treasurer Trevor Lake. Immediate Past President Andrew Selking.
Present.
Region One President Doug Hart. Region Two President RJ Marquette. Region Three President Bill Wild.
Present.
Region Four President Brad Briggs.
Present.
Region Five President Christopher Seplak.
Present.
Region Six President Larry Madden.
Present.
Region Seven President Jane Carmichael.
Present.
Region Eight President Greg Badner.
Present.
Region Nine President Bill Miller.
Present.
Region Ten President Kathy Giesi.
Present.
Region Eleven President Ken Johansson.
Present.
Region Twelve President Laverne McHenry.
Present.
Parliamentarian Joanne Miller.
Present.
Corporate Manager Lori Plummer.
Present.
We have 20 present.
Thank you, Linda. The form is present. A proposed agenda for this meeting is before you. Without objection, this will be the agenda. Hearing no objection, this will be the agenda for this meeting. The minutes of July 24, 2021, IBT Hybrid Meeting have been distributed electronically to the members of this Board. Without objection, we shall dispense with the reading of the minutes. Hearing none, we will dispense with the reading of the minutes. Are there any corrections to these minutes? Since there are no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed. Next item on the agenda is reported to the officers. First, the President's report. I just want to thank everybody for being here. We've had a great turnout, and last time I heard, we were about 80 trailers. Is that right, John?
We got 78 rigs.
78 rigs here. So we've had a really good turnout. That's all I have to say today. Everybody enjoyed your meal tonight and thank you for being here. Are there any other reports of the officers? Eric? Okay. Next will be a report from Eric McHenry, First Vice President.
First, I just have to say thanks to John and the team. This has been wonderful. Sure, the same feeling. It's really good to get back together. You know, it's why we're in the club, to get back together with our friends and exploring the places. Laverne and I hope to get into Savannah before we leave, but thank you. I know it's a huge effort. I just wanted to share briefly, and I will be sharing more information with that committee and then later to the Board on the status of the website and the international database, International Rally Database. We need to, where I continue to be the project manager for our database, our website, corporate manager may talk about it as well. I'm pleased to say some things are going great. There's a lot of things that need improvement. We're very aware of that. We are in a phase now, finally, where things, look at Lori before I say this, are becoming stable on the back inside. By stable, I mean the data in there is generally correct. And one of the problems that any organization has when they migrate system is that the data that comes across, in this case, member information, what caravan you've been on, what leadership position you have, what's your phone number, what's your email. The information that comes across from the system, we have to forward to the new system, invariably there's cleanup. We've gotten to a point now, through this last renewal phase, where we're much better off. And Lori can speak more about the renewal process, but it actually went relatively well from the media side. There was issues from the back inside. The next thing for us, to my, peer to my right, who's really helping out this thought process, we need to do a better job showing the Board what the financial obligations and commitments and the financial planning structure is for our technology, right? It's not free, as you all know. It feels like every day we get a quote for $750 for this, $1,000 for that, and we need help prioritizing what our club wants to do next that meets our members' needs next. That's something that Pear is going to help with, with his particular technology background also, so we can present you guys with a really good set of, this is what it's going to cost to this. And you may tell us, you know, we really want to prioritize this over that, or we don't think that's important to our members, or what about this? So kudos to all of the local clubs and regions for the patience as we navigated this. The next big test for it will be the International Rally Database, which is tied over, it's looking good. We're good on that. But thank you for your help and support on the technology bits. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. That's it for me.
Thank you, Eric. Pear Hamquist, Second Vice President, will report next.
Let me say that it has been an honor to serve the members of this club. It means a lot to me personally and for my wife as well. This year has, one of my focuses has been on trying to identify a site for the International Rally in 2024, and it's going well. We're pursuing three potential locations. I feel where they are, but let's just say that we are pursuing them in parallel, and I'm glad I am, because they are different. I'm also inspired by the sense of growing respect among the members at the IBT level for differing opinions on sensitive topics, including COVID-19. We fall on two different sides of the fence on some of these sensitive topics, and I'm happy to see that people can listen to each other and consider that as we look for options to, you know, support the big group of local clubs that we have out there. They're not all the same, and it's been even more visible to me that, you know, we call ourselves the club, but we are actually a lot of little clubs with a branding umbrella top. So thanks, looking forward to another year. Interesting work.
Thank you, Pear. Next will be a report from Karen Fisher, Third Vice President.
I just want to add my thanks to John and his team for the great rallying here and all the work that I know they put into it. I'm enjoying being on the EC and learning a lot about how things operate and look forward to continuing to serve the club.
Thank you, Karen. Andy Selking, Immediate Past President, will report next.
I must report that Kathy and I are happy that we are here. Having fun, and the weather is turning out to be the nicest on most of our last winters. Thanks to everyone for the great rally, and this has been a happy one.
Thank you, Andy. At this time, I would like to ask if there's any additional reports from Lori Plummer, Corporate Manager.
Thanks, Ty. I'm sorry if I'm freezing, so if I'm shattering, that's why. So I just wanted to touch on membership. This last year or so has been phenomenal, and I also, first of all, thank John and Region Three for having us. I also want to make sure we thank our team at HQ. Our team there does an amazing job of working through all these memberships and things that we're doing. So I want to share a quick graphic just to give you guys an idea of membership. There we go. So if you guys can see.
Nope. You can't read it, but go ahead.
Yeah, you can't read it. I know it's small, but this is the graphic. I wanted you to see that line. So as I mentioned, when we ended 2021, we had 8,954 memberships. And it gives me goosebumps, and I just appreciate all the clubs, everybody bringing these folks in to give, last time we had, we just beat the 2002 membership record. So the very first dot on this line, if you guys can see it, is 2001. So that just gives you an idea of what has happened over the last 20 years. I think it's fantastic. And again, just wanting to share that with you all. I also want to share, maybe, if I can function with my machine here, that of course is not, yeah, there it is. It's not answering me. The other thing that, again, just want to give a visual on is our join process. Again, Amanda, Amanda came to us, and I hope you're listening, because I'm going to pick on you for a second. She came to us in 2019, and both Barb and I said to her, oh, there's a slow period. I promise, there's a slow period. I got to eat a little bit of crow because there hasn't been a slow period. So as you can see, the blue towers on this graphic is 2019, orange is 2020, and the gray is 2021. So that's been our join rate. And I'll share this, and we'll get this posted to everybody, but I thought a visual was nice for everybody to see on our membership. So that's all I have to share right now.
Thank you, Lori. I want to thank Justin Humphries, if he's still listening, for his report earlier this morning. We appreciate you joining us from the trailer show. Is there any correspondence to be read?
No, sir.
May we have the treasurer's report? As Trevor's having computer problems, Linda will read the report.
I'll be patient. I haven't read big numbers like this in a very long time. Treasurer's report includes the period of August 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2021. Income: $1,500,244. Expenses: $755,300. Net income: $744,943. Assets, checking and savings: $828,485. Investments: $414,639. Common sense for kids: $19,230. Lifetime accounts: $118,347. Accounts receivables and other current assets: $91,271. Total current assets: $1,471,972. Fixed assets less depreciation. Got it! Total assets: $1,659,730. Total current liabilities: $140,319. Total equity: $1,519,411. Total liabilities and equity: $1,659,730. Trevor Lake, International Treasurer.
Thank you, Linda. Are there any questions on the treasurer's report? Any questions on the treasurer's report? From the Board? From the Region Vice Presidents? Treasurer's report will be filed. That will be the Executive Committee meeting report.
This is the recap of the executive. Not on.
Just pull it a little closer to you.
How about now? How about now? We have the executive committee meetings and votes from July 27, 2021, through December 1, 2021. Members who attended the following meetings were President Ty Mott, First Vice President Eric McHenry, Second Vice President Pear Hamquist, Third Vice President Karen Fisher, Immediate Past President Andrew Selking, Treasurer Trevor Lake, Recording Secretary Linda Shelton, Parliamentarian Joanne Miller, Corporate Manager Lori Plummer. October 6, 2021, Motion 2101 made by Eric McHenry and seconded by Pear Hamquist to approve the provisional charter of the Grapes and Grains Interclub. Motion carried unanimously. November 3, Motion 2102R1 made by Pear Hamquist and seconded by Karen Fisher to approve the new logo and flag for the Washington DC unit. Motion carried unanimously. Motion 2103R1 made by Pear Hamquist and seconded by Karen Fisher to approve the name change of the Keystone, Pennsylvania Airstream Club. Motion carried unanimously. Motion 2104 made by Eric McHenry and seconded by Trevor Lake to approve the provisional charter for the Future Streamers Interclub. Motion carried unanimously. After discussing many issues with the Europe Charter, it was decided that a letter of suspension, along with what needs to be done to get the suspension field lifted, would be sent by President Ty Mott. After consulting with Tom Smithson on the correct procedure for the letter, the letter of suspension of charter, and next steps to get back on track were sent to the Europe members on December 15, 2021. November 15, 2021, Motion 2105 made by Pear Hamquist and seconded by Trevor Lake to approve the name change of the North Texas Unit to North Texas Airstream Club. Motion carried unanimously. December 1, 2021, Motion 2106 made by Pear Hamquist and seconded by Karen Fisher to approve the logo design of the North Texas Airstream Club. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Linda. The next order of business is that of the Standing Committee and Special Committee reports. All members of this Board have received electronic copies of the written report and action items filled by each committee. The order of the Standing Committee reports is listed in the Bylaws, Article 3, Section 1. For those watching, these reports and motions are on airstreamclub.org/IBT, where you can refer to them. We will begin with the Standing Committee reports. Some committee reports include action items which will be presented with the committee report. I would like to introduce Joanne Miller as a parliamentarian to explain the process for amending motions.
During the discussion in the last couple of days, it was decided that it would be okay, or preferable, that some of these motions may be amended during this meeting. And so this is going to probably be a learning process for those of us that are sitting here on the Board, and we will gladly work you through those steps. So don't panic if you want something to amend. So you'll be voting on a few motions today. Each motion will be introduced and read by the motion maker. Unless the motion is from a committee, the motion will need to be seconded before it can be discussed. After a motion has been made and before the question has been stated by the Chair, any member can quickly rise and with little or no explanatory comment, informally suggest one or more modifications to the motion. This would be the friendly amendments that were discussed yesterday. At this point, the maker of the motion can accept or reject the suggestion as he or she wishes. And this method should be generally limited to minor changes about which there's likely unlikely to be a difference of opinion. If you would like to propose a change in the wording of the motion you are voting on, you can make a motion to amend the original motion after the Chair recognizes you, and this would be after it has been presented by the Chair. The motion may be amended by striking out words, inserting or adding words, striking out words and inserting others in their place, or substituting one paragraph for another. When you have been recognized by the Chair, you may say, I move to amend the motion by, and then you would say, striking out such and such, or inserting these words. Another member can say, while the amendment is pending, that if it is voted down, he or she will offer another amendment, which he or she can then briefly explain in that discussion. So for example, I'm going to use a couple of examples here. If the President from Region Three had an amendment that he would like considered, and he shared that amendment with the group, and the President from Region Five says, wait a second, if you turn that amendment down, this is an amendment I would like to propose in its place. And so then they can discuss the two and decide, okay, do we want the amendment from Region Three President, or would we prefer the amendment from the Region Five President? And through discussion, we would decide which amendment they wanted. The amendment will need to be seconded before discussion begins on it. And the amendment, if there isn't an amendment to the motion, the amendment will be voted on before the vote is taken on the original motion. If the amendment is approved or adopted, then the vote will be on the original motion as amended. If it is not, if the amendment is not approved, then we will just go on to vote on the original motion as it stands without any amendments. Okay? Now, I know that sounds confusing. This is something that we have done in the past when we've had the seminar separate from the IBT. We're now trying to show people what's going on, that it's not all taking place behind the scenes, and we will be working through this process with you. So please, if you have an amendment that you want to present, present it. I will help you work through the steps, okay?
Thank you, Joanne. As directed by policy, 8.6.1, Section E, IBT votes are to be by roll call unless a request for unanimous consent is approved. The Chair will put the question for unanimous consent on all motions after discussion is complete. If there is an objection to unanimous consent, a roll call vote will be taken. After a motion has been passed, headquarters will make the appropriate changes to the Blue Book and distribute them. This is a report from the budgeted Standing Committee. John Becker, Caravan Standing Committee Chair, you have the committee's report. Are there any additions to this report?
John Becker, I'm the Chair for the Caravan Committee. Yeah, I do have some additions. In my report, on the second page, I mentioned that Gary and Rosemary Anderson, as well as Ray and Carol Combs, qualified for 800 numbers in this past year. Also, Judy and Peter Schwartz, leaders of Cajun and will be leaders in Alaska on the alternate years with the Hackneys, have also qualified. So when you do see them, they'll be number 888, which is the number my Chinese friends would have picked. And so when you do see them, please give them your thanks, because they've done a great service to the club by leading caravans. And as I mentioned in my report, the Andersons and also the Combs continue to do a good job on formal and informal training and mentoring. Also, we're up to 24 national caravans for next year. I inadvertently left off rolling to the Big Easy. I'd also like to add that we have some newly trained leaders, will be co-leaders, the Ed and Joni Hall will be co-leaders on Smidge of the Blue Ridge next year, and we will have two numbered local caravans going to International. So that means they'll meet the requirements of using the kiddie fee method. They're also eligible for, from the caravan fund, to get some advanced funds to make deposits, which way they will then return once the caravan runs. So those are the additions to my report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions from the Board?
Jane Carmichael, Region Seven President. Question for those who don't know how you get an 800 number. How many caravans do they lead as, so they qualify?
After leading five national caravans, you qualify for the 800 number.
Any questions from the Region Vice Presidents? From the audience? From the audience? Thank you, John. We appreciate your time. Constitution and Bylaw Standing Committee Chair, Tom Smithson, you have the written committee's report. Are there any additions to the report, Tom?
Tom Smithson, CBL Chair, the only addition I would make is that the numbers of...
Can you turn your mic on? Turn it on.
Turn it on.
Thank you, Tom Smithson, CBL Chair. The only addition to the report is that my listing of the number of clubs who are out of compliance with their annual or their five-year review is now somewhat shorter. A number of them, since the report was written, have submitted the necessary documentation. And carefully additions.
Any questions from the board? Region Vice Presidents? From the audience? There are two action items presented with this report. Tom, will you please read motion A dash R dash one entitled deletions of constitutional delegates meetings from the WBCCI Constitution?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion, summary of this motion is the motion deletes WBCCI Constitution article eleven constitutional delegates meeting and all references to constitutional delegates meeting in WBCCI Constitution article ten, club organization. Further, delete WBCCI Constitution article fourteen amendments and insert a new article fourteen amendments, as well as renumbering the remaining WBCCI Constitution articles to reflect these changes. Motion is, I move that the International Board of Trustees submits the membership to following amendment to the WBCCI Constitution. Delete in its entirety article eleven constitutional delegates meeting. Further, with the reference to constitutional delegates meeting in WBCCI Constitution article ten, club organization, section two, and insert or any amendments to the WBCCI Constitution. Further, delete WBCCI Constitution article fourteen amendments in its entirety and insert a new article fourteen amendments, and renumber the remaining articles of the Constitution.
This is a motion from a committee and does not require a second. Please read your proposed impact, background, and financial impact statements.
The purpose of this motion is to establish a new method for amending the WBCCI Constitution by removing the requirement for delegates from the international rally and establishing in policy a new method for amendment. The impact of this motion will be to provide a more expeditious way to amend the WBCCI Constitution, as well as free up time at the international rally for more educational and social activities. In addition, it will provide the opportunity for all members to directly contribute to the perfection of any proposed amendments. Background. The history of WBCCI amendments to the Constitution have been a drawn-out process, with proposals going to the International Board of Trustees, and if approved, submitted to the Constitution Bylaws Committee for Review. Following the review, the proposed amendments would be sent to local clubs for their consideration and a club vote on the proposal. The vote would then be carried to the international rally delegates meeting for reporting by a local club delegate. In addition, the opportunity to amend any motion was only available at a delegates meeting, further drawn out process.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion? Financial impact, I'm sorry, Tom, I cut you short.
Just a little. Financial impact, there is a positive financial impact in removing any expenses associated with a delegate meeting from the international rally. Thank you.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? From the Region Vice Presidents? From the audience?
We have one online.
You got one online?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning. This is Gail Harrower calling, Alberta Saskatchewan unit, past international treasurer. I have a question for Mr. Smithson. The financial impact you stated says that by removing the delegates meeting, that you will remove any expenses associated with it. From my understanding, this was done back in twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, that the cost of the delegates meeting was borne by the club as a whole and not by the international rally. Is that still correct?
That is correct.
So then there is no financial impact?
There is no financial impact to the rally, the international rally, in so much as that is self-funding. However, anything associated with the delegates meeting was funded by headquarters.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have my word? Okay. Karen?
Karen Fisher, International Third Vice President. At what point do we read the proviso attached to this motion?
Who's speaking for one thing? Okay. Yes, you should read the proviso. You should read the proviso.
Yes, I will.
Not Joanne Hesit.
I believe the proviso to this is that if the motion were to be passed by the delegates at the extra international rally, that there is a policy statement which will be submitted, which details out the entire method by which amendments of the Constitution be handled.
May I help? May I help you?
Yes, thank you.
Policy eighteen point one point one will provide the procedure for consideration and approval of constitutional amendments.
Thank you very much. This is my frustration of not having my Airstream as a printer in it, having to work off of my head. Computers and tablets didn't work that well.
Any other questions? This motion requires a majority vote to be affirmative to pass. Or propose forwarding Constitution delegates to I twenty twenty-two, a constitutional amendment in article eleven, Constitution delegates in article ten, club organization, and article fourteen amendments, and insert a new article fourteen, and renumber the remaining constitutional articles. Are you ready for the questions? The vote is on motion A dash R one as read. Without objection, motion A dash R one as read will be approved. There is no objection, motion A dash R one is approved and will be forwarded to the membership. Okay. Tom, will you please read motion B entitled motion due date to headquarters for publication?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion due date to headquarters for publication. Summary, this motion simplifies the timeline for international orders of these agenda items to be submitted to headquarters. Motion, I move in WBCC bylaws article eight, Board of Trustees, Section Three and Section Four, Parts A through C be deleted and a new Section Three be inserted. In Section Four, insert a new Part A and reletter Part D.
This motion is from a committee and does not require a second. Please read your proposed impact, background, and financial impact statement.
Purpose of the impact, this motion clarifies the submission timeline for reports and motions to be submitted as agenda items for any international Board of Trustees meeting. The impact is to provide agendas that reflect the content of any meeting in a timely manner. Background, previously, there were multiple days or timelines for submission of agenda items leading to conflicts with headquarters. To clarify, there's a single timeline is established by this motion. Financial impact, there is no financial impact to WBCC.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? This is a bylaw amendment and requires a two-third vote and the affirmative to pass. The motion proposed deleting bylaws Article Eight, Board of Trustees, Section Three and Section Four, Parts A through C, inserting a new Section Three, inserting a new Section Four, Part A, and relettering Part D. Are you ready for the question? The vote is on a motion number B as read. Without objection, motion B as read will be approved. There is no objection, motion B is approved. Thank you, Tom. Did you see that? Bob Kawa, Ethics and Grievance Standing Committee Chair, you have the committee's report. Are there any additions to the report, Bob?
No, I don't see him.
Yeah, he is online.
There are no additions to my report. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Region Vice Presidents? Audience? Thank you, Bob, for joining us by Zoom today.
Thank you.
Joe Peplinsky, Historical Standing Committee Chair, you have the committee's report. Are there any additions to this report?
Joe Peplinsky, Historical Committee Standing, Standing Committee Chair, there are no additions or corrections to my report.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions from the board? Region Vice Presidents? Thank you, Joe, for joining us by Zoom today. Mark Knight, I'm Informational Technology Standing Committee Chair, you have the committee's report. Are there any additions to this report?
There is one addition that I would like to add to the report, is that Google has determined that we can no longer have a free email domain for wbcc.net, and is attempting to charge it. So we have to, there's a, there's some analysis to be done, what the 503C or non-503C organization license is in our case, can do to actually keep our airstreamclub.net and wbcc.net accounts active.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions from the board? From the Region Vice Presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Mark, for joining us by Zoom. Is there a report from the International Rally Committee?
Oh, my.
I have nothing to report at this time. The last time we knew, Lori put out, we had eight hundred and...
I apologize. I was watching. Hang on.
Jane Carmichael is having technical difficulties.
It's a really good song.
I now muted it, and I apologize.
Right now, for international, we have eight hundred and twenty-four?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine trailers registered for international. And so we're getting to our thousand quota that I want to be at. Rick Seepo, Chair of the International Rally Site Standing Committee, you have the committee's report. Okay. Rick hasn't joined us this morning, so are there any questions from the board? Region officers? The audience? Thank you, Rick, for your report. Per Hamquist, Chair of International Relations and Standing Committee, you have the committee's report. Are there any additions to this report?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to add that the big subject of this committee has been to work with setting up a new board for the European unit, and we are eager to help them to get that put in place.
Thank you, Per. Are there any questions from the board? Bill Wild?
Mr. President, I'm not clear on why we had to suspend the charter. Can you briefly say what happened that caused that?
So there were two reasons for suspending the charter. The first one was that there was a trademark violation where the European unit had established a website which used a DNS name that was not approved, and it was not in compliance with our trademark name, Airstream Inc. And in failing to respond to us to that, we took the next step, which was to pull the charter or suspend the charter. It also coincided with the realization that they didn't have a formally elected board in place to operate, which is why we also didn't hear back from them. So now, the trademark violation has been addressed, but the board establishing a properly-elected board is still something we are working.
I'd just like to add that I've been working with them on that, and they're definitely getting on board with us and getting things straightened out for us. So hopefully soon we'll be reinstated. Okay. Thank you, Per. In compliance with bylaws Article Three, Section Six, Page Two, the International Third Vice President elected in the odd number of years shall serve a two-year term as committee chair. Karen Fisher is the Chair of the Lifetime Membership Fund Standing Committee. You have the committee's report. Are there any additions to this report, Karen?
No additions. I just want to reiterate that I am looking for at least one additional person who would be willing to serve on this committee with me. Currently have myself and Terry Warren on the committee.
Thank you, Karen. Are there any questions from the board? From the Region Presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Karen. In compliance with bylaws Article Three, Section Seven, Page Four, the International Third Vice President elected in the even number of years, he shall serve a two-year term as committee. Per Hamquist is the Chair of the Long Range Planning Standing Committee. We have the, you have the report, committee's report. Are there additions to this report?
Mr. President, I would like to clarify the essence of that report, and it's a strong suggestion that we essentially move the long-range planning process out of a sidecar committee and into the IBT and executive committee, where it really belongs.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from Region Vice Presidents? Or from the audience? Matt Acme?
Matt Acme, Region Three President, I want to simply comment that the purpose of creating the Long Range Planning Committee was, in essence, because there was no long-range planning. And I look forward to the time when the executive committee or executive council will embrace a long-range plan. It has been obvious by the actions of the most recent several executive committees that they do embrace that philosophy. Just wanted to come with it. I agree there is no longer purpose serving the sidecar committee.
Thank you, Matt. I'm glad to be here, and I'm not the only one. Thank you, Per. Terry Warren, Chair of the Membership Standing Committee, you have the committee's report. Are there any additions to this report?
The only addition is that as of today, we have seven thousand three hundred and thirty-nine members, which is an increase of almost two hundred since the report was initially filed. of almost 200 since the report was initially filed.
Thank you, Terry. Any questions from the board? From the Region Vice Presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Terry. Is there a report from the National Rally Standing Committee? Oh, she's coming, there she is. Stop there.
I did, I did not do my report in a timely manner and did not get it in. I did do how, probably due to the confusion and things with this COVID of what's running, what's not running, when, and some communication on my part, but since then I have gotten several reports and we seem to be starting up again and I'll have a reform and maybe information in the office if they haven't come for what they need.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the Region Vice Presidents? Any questions from the audience? Okay. Andrew Selke, Chair of Nomination Standing Committee, you have the committee's report, are there any additions to this report?
I don't have any additions, I would like to just read, read the names of the people that have submitted their names, Eric McHenry for President, Per Hamquist, First Vice President, Karen Fisher, Second Vice President, Millie O'Donnell, Third Vice President, Matt Hackney, Treasurer, and Terry Warren, Secretary.
Are there any questions from the board? From the Region Vice Presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Andy. Elizabeth Smith, and Chair of the Publication Standing Committee, you have the committee's report, are there any additions to this report at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have two additions. My sounding board has increased by one. I met the lovely Jane Briggs at the Rose Prairie Valley and she said yes, so I have one more member of my sounding board. Also, I don't know if anybody cares, but in November, I read and responded to 29 newsletters, December, February 23, so I'm a number person.
Are there any questions from the board? Region Vice Presidents? Or the audience? Thank you. Is there a report from the Technical Standing Committee? I'm sure you want to play for it, you want to go to noon and do lunch. Okay, we can either take a break now or we can just go another half hour and take our lunch break for an hour and then come back, what's the overall consensus? You want for a half hour?
Continue.
Okay. Special Committee Reports and the WBCCI Foundation Reports are next. Karen Fisher, President of the WBCCI Foundation, you have the Foundation's report before you, are there any additions to this report? Special Committee Reports and WBCCI Foundation Reports are next. Karen Fisher, President of the WBCCI Foundation, you have the Foundation's report before you, are there any additions to this report, Karen?
I wanted to make sure that everyone online and in the room is aware that that report was updated just last evening, that was my fault, I sent the wrong file to them. But I want to point out that, and for those in the room, at least for the IBT in the room, I did put a hard copy at your spot, the, the changes include that we did send out a appeal on early December and late November, that appeal resulted in net donations of $425.03, we want to thank those members who donated. The second change to the original report is that the financial report was updated December 31st, it is the report that I gave you or it's included in the packet. One thing that has happened since the end of the year, so it doesn't belong in this report, but I want to make people aware, is Pete Yang did turn in a resignation, he had to step down for personal reasons, so in addition to looking for a representative from Regions 1 and 2, I'm also looking for a representative from Regions 7 and 8.
Are there any questions from the board? Region Vice Presidents? The audience? Thank you, Karen.
President, did you check for a report from the Technical Standing Committee?
Yes, there was nothing.
I see.
Jim Cox, Chair of the Executive Committee, terms of service special committee, you have the committee's report before you, are there any additions to this report, Jim? Are there any questions on the report? From the board? Region Vice Presidents? Audience? According to the policy, 16.6.6, Inter Club, Section C, Inter Club shall provide an annual report. Report to the International Board of Trustees at the scheduled IBT meetings of the International Rally. There are three Inter Clubs which have submitted written reports for this midwinter meeting. Don McElvee, President of the Classic Airstream Inter Club, you have the Inter Club's report before you, are there any additions to this report? He doesn't see him online either. Are there any questions from the board on the report? From the Region Vice Presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Don, for the report. Carolyn Berkshire, President of the Streamers Inter Club, you have the Inter Club reports before you, are there any additions to this report?
She's outside.
Okay. Are there any questions for this? From the board, the Region Officers? The Vice Presidents, sorry, or from the audience? Thank you, Carolyn.
Looks like we have one in the audience on Sam.
Who's it?
Jim Johnson is on.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, I, I raised, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just raised my hand, I've got amateur radio report at the end of the rest of, okay?
Okay, thank you. So you can't do that?
No, it's a heat.
Yeah, we should have Lisa's report done. Where would that come in? Okay, Jim, that'll be, after the back report, we'll have you do your ham operator report.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Yep. Lisa Slid, President of the Vintage Airstream Inter Club, you have the Inter Club's report before you, are there any additions to this report? Are there any questions from the board?
Question?
Go ahead, Chris.
You said current membership was as of January of 2021, is that typo or? It's reported that for January 21.
Okay.
Actually, knowing that we are about less than that because it fluctuates as we ask if we have that.
Remember when you talk, you got to identify yourself, okay? Sorry, thank you. Any questions from the Region Vice Presidents? The audience? Thank you, Lisa, for your report. Okay. Carolyn Berkshire? Okay. Carolyn Berkshire, President of the Indie Streamers Inter Club, we have, you have the Inter Club report before you, are there any additions to this report? Could you come up to the microphone, please, since this is being broadcast live?
I'm Carolyn Berkshire and I'm President of the Indie Streamers Inter Club and the only thing I have to report is good news, we're now at 202 members. We have had two gatherings, we're anticipating a rendezvous before Freiburg and hopefully we can get all to park together at Freiburg, that's really important to us because we are people travelers spread out over the entire country and we need to get together. Okay, so thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? From the Region Vice Presidents? From the audience? Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, Jim Johnson?
Okay, thank you, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, great, okay, this is for the Amateur Radio Club, I'm sorry that I missed the deadline for the written report. So, we have 317 net members as of just a day or two ago, we're fairly active at Lebanon with four different events, exams, we had 18 people take exams, 15 of those were WBAC club members and three of them were locals. We're doing a presentation and some prizes at the Orlando Hamcation, which we do every year in February. And we also have a daily HF long-range net on almost every day of the year, there's a couple of days that we don't. And finally, just want to remind everybody that the, the purpose of the ARC and amateur radio in general is for emergency communications. So, that, I'll make the report short and sweet, so thank you, any questions?
From the board? From the Region Vice Presidents? From the audience? This is just a reminder that when they have deadlines for dates and stuff, they've got to be turned in on time, so you can put these in the script and have them distributed to everybody. There is no unfinished business, there are four items of new business. Motion 1-R-1 is from Eric McHenry and is titled IBT Restructure.
I would suggest take the lunch.
We're going to take a break right now for an hour's lunch break, we'll be back here at 12:35 and we'll get started on these. Thank you. That's just going to get a long time to stop.
Is that funny?
You want this on your back, use the door's open? You can't help it.
I'm going to plug.
Sorry, Kathy.
Yeah. No, I, I have to.
It's a good song. So, I understand. I went on airstream.org and tried to sign on this meeting, but I can't log in, I don't know how to get, I will show you as soon as it reads. It told me to sign in, so I signed in.
John Lee.
Bring this meeting back to order. Don't let break. We discovered that Andy Selfman's nominating committee report needs to be updated, so he'll be sending that out to us in the next couple of weeks. Okay?
Process on that that needs to be updated. Okay?
Yes, okay. Let's begin where we dropped off at, which was motion one dash R1 is from Eric McHenry and it's titled IBT restructure. Eric, will you please read your motion?
I move that the International Board of Trustees submit to the WBCCI membership constitutional amendment. Constitutional Article seven, officers and their election, and Article eight, board of trustees to be deleted, and a new Article seven, board of trustees and Article eight, international officers being inserted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bill Wild. Please read your proposed impact, background and financial impact statements.
Clarification, I apologize. So I do, I do what it presents a PowerPoint that was part of the package and after the discuss, after the affirmative.
After we get to the questions.
Purpose and impact, restructure the executive committee with the following objectives. Develop an executive council structure that reduces the total time commitment expectation of its members to a manageable number. Help to attract talented individuals and enhance succession and continuity and open opportunities to serve a broader set of WBCCI members. While broad executive council participation without requiring an ascension to president. Provide a structure and process that helps the IBT select officers that have the right skills at the right time. Proven leadership track records, active involvement, excitement in WBCCI, et cetera. Get beyond the learning curve and help continuity by increasing terms of office to two years versus one. Make it easier to run the club by adopting a proven board structure used by most nonprofits, local governments, for profit, et cetera. Integrate strategic planning and oversight through standing and special committees into the executive council structure. That was the purpose and impact. Okay, background? A special committee was formed as a result of the discussions at the International Board of Trustees in Lebanon, Tennessee. The special committee was charged to review our current leadership structure, review best practices in government, nonprofit and corporate governing boards, then report back to the executive committee with recommendations. This motion implements additional constitutional recommendations put forward by the special committee and presented to the IBT in December of 2021. Financial impact, some impact to be managed to the budget process.
Let me just remind everybody to have your phones on mute for this. This is going to be a proper discussion area. So make sure they're off ringing. Are there any questions? Oh, your PowerPoint. Yep.
Yeah, I will be talking us through a PowerPoint. Our corporate manager is going to bring that up. Actually, bringing that up, I do have a couple of preparatory comments or advanced comments. First, as I mentioned, this motion is consistent with recommendations from the special committee and the transition planning team. And I just have to say thank you, you know, for the WBICI members and officers who did the bulk of the work bringing this together, and it was a substantial body of work that occurred over the months of October, frankly, a couple of days ago. This motion includes changes based on input from the IBT discussion that we all had on Tuesday. And then also a special thanks to Karen and to Tom for working to update the revised motion language instead of us going to happy hour that is being presented today. So thanks, Karen. The next time it's a lot of detail. So more comments before we go to the PowerPoint. There are no changes proposed in this to the rules in the IBT. This critical role remains intact and in fact will be strengthened due to the new rule, the reason presidents have the increased role, they have been actively selected international president, vice president, et cetera. Actually, it increases their responsibility and impact, frankly. In pass, the motion will be presented to the hundred plus delegates, the representatives of our local clubs. After I go to the PowerPoint, Lori Plummer, our corporate manager, will give a rough overview and timing of the communications plan that will begin within the next 30 days if this is approved to move to delegates. And this communication plan is targeted at providing information, information to our members and delegates of the choices that are in front of them. There was a proviso, provisor, provisor. Please just be patient. There's a lot of stuff for me to go over. So there's a provisor that people see at the bottom of the amendment in front of you now. The provisor reads that if the delegates pass this amendment, it becomes effective August 1st, 2022. Additional transition and time and details will be addressed to policy changes to be presented July 30th, 2022 IBT. Okay, and in the interest of transparency, thank you, Bill, or thank you, Brad and others. This is through the construction of the IBT. This constitutional motion includes language that also aligns the international officer term dates with the fiscal year. And that's August 1st and July 31st. Just as a side point, right now they're lying to when the international rally happened. This motion has some incidental language that says that those terms will now be set to the fiscal years, or term and date of July, August 1st, July 31st. This motion also includes language that removes the international rally dates from the constitution but is prepared to leave it in the bylaws. That's kind of a complicated discussion, but the bylaws as they stand today. That's kind of a complicated discussion, but the bylaws as they stand today generally provide the governing board to select the data apart to a month appropriate to the geographical region. In other words, it doesn't have to be in July. And in some ways, I would say most importantly, this allows the full IBT, so all of the region presidents and the rest of the deck council to select the president who demonstrates the best leadership, teamwork, collaborative skills to work with the full board. It's my hope that if adopted, this would lead to a board that can debate and act on difficult issues and opportunities in an open and and respectful way. This presentation is also accompanied by a detailed document that includes roughly thirty frequently asked questions. And after the presentation, the overview, Tom Smith and our CBL chair will talk through the specific motion language. Okay, PowerPoint. Jim Cock, a pastor national president, as the board has heard from many times, was appointed by Time Warner, our president, from the special committee. He and his team, him, his team, Dave, my opinion, I was involved, was involved, and Fisher and the more use. Next slide. We'll talk about today briefly is the background, the goal, the structure proposal, and next steps. Now, you and the IBT have already seen this. But it's critical for us, I think you all said that everyone else who's hearing these discussions understand what we're doing and starting from. So many of you haven't heard this online, so we're going to go through it again in an abbreviated manner, perhaps not as good as Mr. Cock did. Next slide. Background and the rationale for considering a change in the structure is that our club is facing a significant opportunity to leadership growth, finances, partnerships, and technology. A structural change at the leadership level would enhance the club's ability to quickly recognize and respond to these trends. In addition, clearly defined areas of responsibility, a larger leadership team with a first skill set, strategic goals, involving leadership in all, in all the regions should strengthen and elevate the club's position amongst potential members and like organizations. So we're saying that nothing is broken now, but there's opportunities for significant improvement. Next slide please. So since our foundation as a club in their early days, our club has been led by a president, followed in subsequent years to the first vice president and then the second vice president and the third vice, all serving one year terms. The structure has generally worked over the years, but it has not been perfect. Every year, the one term limits, you know, cause us to lose the experience of our international officers, really just as they're reaching their full stride in office. In addition, the growing complexity of our club suggests we would benefit from a more diverse ID team. Bringing in additional qualified individuals with strong leadership, finance, potentially ego, communications, governance, social grounds, who really want to serve our club, but who may not have a goal for ascension to president. In other words, people who may want to serve on the board for two year term and then step off. Next slide please. So the goals were touched on earlier, to basically improve the EC structure. Select officers that have the right skills at the right time. I guess I just have to stress, this board is a critical board for helping our club be what our members want it to be, whether it be their interest in caravans, their interest in outdoors activities, whatever it is, this board helps those local clubs and structures function well. We need to have like a lot of executive officers who demonstrate they can work with this board in a collaborative way to make decisions for and after good debate. And frankly, also make it easier to run the club. And we look at the transition team said, we really suggest to you all that you adopt a proven board structure that is used by most nonprofits, local governments, for profit, et cetera. Just a bit of a personal aside, like most of you know that in addition to me thinking that coming week, I've had the the pleasure of serving on a number of nonprofit and now for profit boards. Those range from boards as large as the food bank of my local county and night away board president to serving as a board president of our local observatory and working on a group of board that provided services for young kids that had lost their parents. And I can say that all of those boards have a similar very structure, similar to what we're proposing today, where the members elect people onto the board. And then the board decides within the board who is best qualified to lead the organization at that time. Next slide please. So the new structure, and it's really hard to read, I won't go through it all, but basically there the term, the term international board of trustees is an umbrella organization. It's all of us, it's table here, most of us includes, it includes elected, elected people like your elected officers. It also includes region presidents who are elected, but elected by the regions because they best understand and can represent their region's interests and desires. And that's kind of the strength of the IBT, coupling local expertise and knowledge, might call it state's knowledge, if you will, with people that are focused more on the club level together and have done well, that works well together. So we can all read this, it's part of the motions as well, but this is the structure that we're looking at proposing that the transition team look to propose. Next slide please. This is a little bit dated, but we didn't want to confuse with too much information. This was actually presented about a month ago by Jim, Jim Cock and his transition team. And this first bullet has largely been accomplished over the last few days. So a subset of the IBT, and again, I want to thank some of the region presidents here for serving on that. Has set with Jim and some other people to sort of find to the proposal that we came into Savannah with. They finalized the number of EC members, they finalized the titles and the rough responsibilities. We started to develop our transitional scenarios, a couple of scenarios. They've done that body of work, it's reflected in general in both the motion and the proposal to be adopted in twenty twenty two with bylaws changing just before that. Critical timing on it that they spoke to was that, you know, we reserve constitutional amendments to generally once a year because it is incumbent upon us to poll the members for their preferences. And so the constitutional amendments typically will go out in the spring and then all of the members are sixteen thousand members will have the opportunity to voice their support or rejection of any proposals the board comes up with. And then that gets determined in the next international rally. Next slide please. Okay, that's, that's it for this. I'm going to turn it.
Got it.
I'm going to now shift to ask next presenter as part of this. And when we talked about this with board trustees over the last couple of days, a lot of questions came up about, look, this is a lot of new information. What is the timing for getting this to our members so they can be informed and they can get their feedback? And so we realize at that time that a lot of our members don't fully understand how things go from here to delegates, to members, to blah, blah, blah. So Lori Plummer, our corporate manager, is going to describe that process.
Thanks, Eric. So, um, so everybody is aware, the delegates meeting for twenty twenty two will be on Wednesday, July seventh and in Fryburg, Maine. Seven? Twenty seven.
Seven.
July twenty seven, twenty twenty two. The process currently in our, our bylaws is constitutional amendments are due to HQ by March first each year. At that time, once I receive the constitutional amendments, I send them to the CBNL committee and they do a report, which is due back to HQ by March twentieth. Delegate packets, and when I say delegate packets, this is a packet that we send out to all the local club presidents so they can educate and poll their members. Those packets are due to the local clubs eighty days prior to the delegates meeting, which is May eighth of twenty twenty two. And we send those packets both electronically and by mail in hopes to make sure the local club receives them. Providing this gets passed, gets approved to go to our membership. We have approximately six months to come up with a good communication plan to educate our members so they understand what we are trying to accomplish. Our communication avenues will include the blue beret, our website, emails, videos. We will establish some talking points for our officers as well as we can set up Zoom Q and A sessions for our members. If they want to speak to somebody on the, on the board transition team, somebody who's been involved with that as well. We also, in the month of April, is traditionally the, the month of the candidate information. And then in the month of May, in the blue beret, is when the physical, a collapsed version of the constitution is published to our members. So with that is, that is the current.
Thank you, Lori. And for the, for the final, final part of this, I've asked our CBL chair, Tom Smithson, to talk us through the proposed amendment. Not the red lines, God, that's part of you, but the proposed, proposed specific language. As someone said to us at Canover, given in a small way, so we want to make sure that we understand the specific language of the amendment that we'll be proposing you to send to the delegates.
Thank you, Eric. This thing is on. What I'm, I'm not going to read what's going to be deleted, I'm going to read what is being proposed. The new Article seven of trustees would read the the administrative body of the international club should be the board of trustees, sometimes after referred to as the board, IBT. International Board of Trustees. Computer wants me to do something. International Board of Trustees is composed of two membership components. First, the executive council, ten members elected at large by the membership. Second, the twelve region presidents of WBCCI. B, the IBT shall have a president, vice president, recording secretary and treasurer elected by the IBT from the executive council members and the past and the past board president. In addition to non-voting trustees, the chief executive officer of Airstream Inc. or an executive officer of Airstream Inc. designated by said chief executive officer and the corporate manager of WBCCI. C, in the event of a regional president, region president is unable to be present at a meeting of the IBT, the next ranking region vice president in order of first and second shall sit with the board at that meeting as a voting member representing that region in all matters coming before the board. D, each member of the board shall serve a success, until a successor is appointed or elected or the member's resignation is accepted by the board. Section two, the board shall hold periodic meetings based on WBCCI's fiscal year at a time and place designated by the president. Special meetings may be called by the president, vice president, or by ten voting members of the board of trustees. Section three, the board of trustees shall have full authority to construe and interpret the club's constitution and bylaws and policies and may delegate this authority to its constitution bylaws committee. Section four, a quorum of the board of trustees should consist of twelve members. Section five, a member of the board of trustees shall hold no international region or local club office or position other than that office or position which places him on said board. Nothing herein contained shall disqualify an international officer or region officer from service upon standing or special committees. Article eight, executive officers. Executive office, section one, the executive officers of the international club shall be a president, a vice president, a recording secretary, and a treasurer. Section two, all executive officers shall be elected from the executive council of the international board of trustees for a term of two years. The officers so elected shall take office at the start of the WBCCI fiscal year. No officer will serve more than two consecutive terms in any one office. Section three, in the event of the death or resignation, an executive, an executive officer of an, of an executive or their inability to fulfill the duties of that office, the international board of trustees shall elect a replacement from the executive council members. There was a provisor. If this delegate, if the delegates pass this amendment, it becomes effective August first, twenty twenty two. Additional transition and timing details will be addressed, the bylaws and policy changes to be presented at the July thirtieth, twenty twenty two IBT meeting.
Before I might conclude my, my comments, I just have to offer my, my personal thoughts. I think it's important. It felt as important to be somewhat neutral to the past discussions. This is a recommendation that I fully supported, but was owned and presented by this committee later, considered by you all. You know, now though, Eric personally, it's my strong hope that this board agrees to present this to the delegates for vote. I do believe our club is getting extremely complicated. There's a number of issues and opportunities that we have now and didn't have fifty years ago. And while this works well, I think it would benefit allowing people, additional people to come onto the board that don't want to be president. As I mentioned before, I'm an officer of a multi-billion dollar bank where we live in Sonoma County. There's no way I ever would be bank president, don't want to be. But I have the opportunity to serve on that board for a term or two and contribute, in this case, the technology expertise in cybersecurity and stuff. I think we should leave room for that in our boards as well. There's people out there that can help us that may not have had the time or opportunity to rise to the region president level or rise up through the ranks like in the time convinced we've all put into it. I think it doesn't hurt us. I think that our members entrust this board to make decisions that benefit them. I, 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 they care about the club. They may not care as much about the structure of the government's, governance board as long as we can be effective in what we do. I'm very supportive of it. As I said before, this is a proven, a proven scenario that has worked through almost all of the complications that we've brought up with. This structure has worked through absences on boards, it's worked through vacancies and resignations, it's worked through for performing board members. It's worked through, who's going to be president next year, just like your local club to the new teams as well. So I'm very supportive of, I hope this sort of delegates. I, I want to thank all of you though for having this discussion. A number of people have said to me, this is by far one of the best discussions that the body has had in terms of openness and time it took. We spent like six months looking at this already and actually more like nine months if you count Tennessee. I really love this process, I'm proud of being part of it. So, so Ty, thank you for getting that off and those conclude my, my comments.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? Very mad.
Where are you, man, and six presidents? I looked over the notion from a positive standpoint, from a negative standpoint, from a neutral standpoint. The one something like I have, and I realize this is a potential, but if I read it, then please feel free to correct me. I'm quite used to that at home. I see a potential that a president could do a term of two years, another term of two years. Go to the immediate past president for two years or the possibility of no two years. So it could be in the position for eight years. Is that correct or is that incorrect?
You're going to be a president, could be president for four years, but a past president for four years is a possible.
Yes, that is correct. That's correct statement? Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else on the board? There's some, Andy Self.
Andy Self, King, best international.
Andy Selk, best international president. This is a question to the maker of the motions. Am I correct in my assumption that if we do this, the new executive committee is now going to be president, first vice president, secretary, and treasurer?
You are correct that those will be the roles, the titles elected by the IB, by the board. But is that the executive?
I'm sorry, Andy, I don't understand that. Can you ask the question again? I apologize.
Your executive group is not going to be made up of the president, first vice president, secretary, and treasurer. Currently, it's made up of same thing, but you've got a second VP, you've got a third VP, and yet they passed international president.
Laurie, can you bring up this slide?
Is that, is that the way it is? So the past international president will not be part of that executive group anymore?
That's not right. Don't see that.
Yeah, I'm trying to get a pullback up.
Past international president. By the way, it looks like he's part of the board, but not part of the executive.
Yes.
Where does it say? And I understand the question now.
I don't know if there's any of them.
Yeah, so Andy, under, I believe it's finally part of the section B, it says. Andy, he's allowed the president, vice president, recording secretary. The past board president, so the past board president is part of the executive council. I was hoping for something to that.
Karen is next, and I have somebody on Zoom call.
I'm going to key answer the question. I had found it.
I'm going to go to John Holly on the Zoom call.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I, I think this is a good move. I do have some questions and concerns. I personally have served on no less than eight boards in various capacities, a board member, board president, and an executive. Anywhere from ten members up to eighty-five members and in my career. And I have a couple of questions. One of them was addressed by Andy a minute ago, but how it will affect the current structure of the vice presidents? And how they will be included in this structure, number one. Number two, question I have is to finalize the titles and responsibilities. It appears that that might be something that's very important before this is voted on, and I hope that that would be thought through before it's presented to the delegates at, in Freiburg. In other words, right now, it is true, doesn't the president really have the responsibility just for planning the annual national rally that we have? And getting to that point? So will that still be the responsibility or is there other things that come into play? What will be the role of the president particularly? I, I understand the role of the other three officers. And my third question is, how will the four members at large be elected? Will they respond to requests to get elected by the membership? Because isn't it the four officers plus the corporate manager and the past president would be plus four at large? Or is it three at large because we include the airstream rep also as a non-voting member? Anyway, I, I do favor this move. I just feel that there's a lot of questions we have that need to be cleared up before Freiburg, and I hope we can come to that point. I think it's a good direction we're, we're moving in, and I understand the need for it. There's just a few questions like I presented that need to be cleared up to the membership. So the membership is also on board, and we don't have a lot of divisiveness or dissension. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Let me try to address those. The slide I presented was generated before the transition team looked at it. So the titles happen from them, they are in the motion, so they are in the motion accurately. And those titles are president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. Those are the elected titles. Does that answer that question? Recording secretary. John, does that answer that first question?
Oh, what about the members at large? How are they elected? How do they get on the executive committee?
Yes, there's a couple of questions in the question. When the amendment in front of you says that they will be elected by the members. The process by which our club elects officials is through direct membership vote that happens once a year. So inasmuch as we currently elect their vice president, second vice president, first vice president, president, the members of the vote. That is how anyone on the executive council will be elected onto that. The second part of their question, I think, is a critical one. And that's that, how will they be sourced? How will they be selected? So we have a nominations committee. I think any of you that have served on the board understand that the nominations committee and that process is probably one of the most critical ones. And getting the right people onto the board and getting people to express interest in the board and being able to assess the applications that come into the board. So as the, this says, there still will be a nomination committee. Nothing changes that. Difference is that if this moves forward, the nomination committee will have the responsibility of not just nominating a third VP. And a second, and a first, and a president, and treasurer, and secretary. It will also have responsibility of dominating the board members or directors at large. So there's this role expands by a few more people. I would say though, that it's even more critical though, to get this breadth of people we're looking for, this is an error common. To have a very robust process for the nominations committee whereby we openly solicit interest in serving on this board. We make it available to anyone in the club. They were really clear what the requirements of a position is. It's not that you've served on a board before or managed X million dollars. It's that, hey, what are the job titles, what are the responsibilities for a board member? You have to be clear what those are, and hopefully we'll get a whole bunch of people requesting to be placed on the ballot for the open positions. The transition team has already shared with us that in their discussions, they found there's actually a lot of the people who would be interested. That just don't want to do two-year terms. I mean, don't want to do, you know, have to be president. So we expect that if we do our job right, our club, so the nominations committee will have a lot of people interested in applying for board positions at large. To be on the executive committee. The role of the president doesn't change in any material way. There's nothing in this that talks about a change to the roles of the president. In fact, in one of the frequently asked questions, and there's roughly thirty of them in the document that was published. About thirty questions in there that came from various people in the last six months. The role of the president doesn't change. I wanted to detail that it doesn't change from what it is today. I've heard questions about the international rally. That specifically isn't one of the, by bylaws, heavy responsibilities of the international president. Though historically, it has been one of the heavy roles of contribution. As you've seen from Freiburg, and you'll see in 2023, Lori Plummer's group is starting to help through the rally committee. To plan those more and more, to provide extra resources in terms of planning of that. That work will continue as a rally committee definition. It's not a national president. John, does that answer your three questions?
Pretty well. I, I think it, it needs probably a little bit more specification regarding the individual duties. Particularly of the president. For instance, I know the president, who is our chief executive officer of the corporation of what we, what we are as a club. It's important, so that means the president still has final say, veto power, et cetera, et cetera, over everything that's going on, I suppose. But that, that better explains it. I think in the process over the next six months or so, those things can be better defined, it should be better defined. And that will clear up a lot of things and any kind of questions that our members may have to vote this through. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Tom Smithson, CBL chair, is going to talk about the current, what's currently the role of the president and other things, how that really doesn't change. I think that's what he's going to say.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Smithson, CBL chair. John, John has raised a very good question. And as I have told this board, and I will continue to repeat, my mantra is, I don't want to see anything in the constitution that says. What we are going to do or how we're going to do it. Currently, the constitution does list the duties of president. However, if this motion is passed and the delegates decide that we're going to have this new structure. Then there will be a significant change in the bylaws, which will take those duties of the president, the duties of the executive council. The duties, duties of the IBT in general, and put it into the bylaws where it actually should be. I hope that answers your question, John. And unfortunately, we can't do this at this moment because it would be in conflict with the existing constitution.
Okay, any other members on the board have a question? Any other members on the board have a question? And the region vice presidents? Anybody in the audience?
Matt Hackney, and in one of the hats I wear is to backstop. Tom Smithson is one of the members of this constitutional bylaws committee. I'd like to offer a couple of friendly amendments, one to correct the existing error in our constitution. And the other two, perhaps clarify or better define a question the international past president has about the motion of the amendment. The first would be, in Article seven, section one, we currently, and in the new motion, incorrectly identify the IBT as an administrative. It is actually the governing body of the club. And so the word administrative would be moved and replaced with the word governing. And section one would read, the governing body of the International Club shall be the Board of Trustees, sometimes hereafter referred to as the board or as the IBT. The second and related change would be to change Article eight, which in the proposal is executive, excuse me, executive officers. That would be retitled executive council. And that new section one would then read, the executive council is the administrative body of the International Club. And shall oversee the daily operations of the club between meetings of the IBT. And then I read over the remaining sections to address that, if, if you would.
So do you want to help us through this process? So as a maker of point, it's a part of accepting that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Okay, so what you need is you need to see the exact wording that Matt has provided you with. And make that change on your motion.
Thanks, Ray. Would you, if I have any part of it, was I going to read it or?
Could you read the?
Can I add it to someone else?
The new sections.
Okay.
Make the two changes as you read it, please.
Okay, so first for Articles seven. The word administrative is removed and placed with the word governing. Section one within read, the governing body of the International Club shall be the, the Board of Trustees, sometimes hereafter referred to as the Board of IBT. The next one is an Article eight, executive officers. The name of this article, so the change from executive officer to executive counsel. So add a new section one, which would read, quote, the executive council is administrative body of the International Club. And shall oversee the daily operations of the club between meetings of the IBT.
Brendan, Brendan needs a copy of that so she can.
Yes. There's one members out there. Okay.
Anybody else with questions from the audience? I'm, I'm going to have Bill Wild. Go ahead.
Oh, wait, John, John Becker is standing here.
Wait, this process, is this a question on the friendly amendment or a question on the second? Do we have to move on the friendly amendment first?
No, when, when the friendly amendment is offered now, the motion is still yours, and you may make any changes that you agree to.
Thank you.
There's no need to vote.
Okay, so I've agreed to that. That's good.
You've agreed to that, and we're good to go.
Thanks, Matt.
Hi, I, I hope that as the frequently answered questions are developed, et cetera, that there could be an explanation of. And here were the alternatives that this group considered and why they're inferior going forward. That'll help communicate it to the members. The structural question I have is, right now, my understanding is, we vote directly for someone to do the treasurer's position. We can review that person's qualifications. I view it as a position that requires a certain amount of technical expertise to keep us out of trouble. Right now, we have to hope that if for the ten positions, we have a slate of fifteen candidates, that somewhere in the fifteen, somebody has that technical expertise. So they can make it on to the executive council, so the IBT can then confirm, yes, you can have the treasurer's position. It's just an issue I see with, because we won't directly elect the treasurer. We'll elect a slate of candidates from those offered up to the membership. And the membership has to be able to choose somebody who has that technical expertise for especially that position. Oh, and I'm John Becker, a member of the Four Corners unit.
So, John, I'll, I'll speak for, in my interpretation, or so the special committee saw some of that as a, yes, that's exactly, you're actually right. You're exactly right. This happens on pretty much any board out there where they have to elect a treasurer. And hopefully, if the nominations committee has been successful in their job, looking for applicants with critical skill sets, one of them will be treasurer. One of them would probably be board secretary, then there is a candidate. What is often seen in the bylaws, and what I believe will be discussed before, is what do we do as a club? If we're unable to fill a certain position for the qualified person? And like in most regions or local clubs, that then becomes the option for the governing body, in this case, the IBT, to do a special election or direct appointment. That's typical for bylaws. Again, most of the regions have that already, and most local clubs have it already for the positions that we have to require success.
Thank you.
Bill Wild.
Mr. President, I take exception to the second note, second item that was mentioned. Of changing executive officers to be executive council. As the, the committee and the team have been going through this process. The term executive officer applied to those four officers. The term executive council applied to everyone who was in that pool of candidates which might be elected as executive officers. We, by changing this, we would be creating confusion about which group of individuals we're referring to.
I understand. I, I, I remember personally, I'm willing to be fine to decide what's the best.
Karen Fisher.
Karen Fisher, interning special board vice president. I worked at this and talked with Matt about it. The reason I suggested changing it to executive council instead of executive officers. Is by adding that new section one that says the executive council is the administrative body and handles the day-to-day stuff. Then the title needed to be executive council to support that. If the title's executive officers, then section one shouldn't talk about the executive council. And I think you want the executive council to be your administrative body, not just your executive officers. Does that make sense?
Anything else, Bill?
Bill Wild, reading three. I'm ambivalent about what we call the groups. But if we're going to call the four officers the executive council, then there needs to be a clearly defined descriptor for the body of individuals from which those officers can be elected.
Karen.
Unfortunately, it's not in this section. It's actually in the previous section. It talks about who the executive council is. It's the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, executive council members, and the immediate past president. And that's actually defined in the IBT section under part A. Where it's comprised of two membership components. where it's comprised of two membership components, first, the Executive Counsel, 10 members elected at large, and then second is the 12 region presidents.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Tom Smithson.
Oh, Tom Smithson, C B L Chair. Once again, the bylaws will define the roles and responsibilities of the individual council members. I, once again, I don't want to put that into the Constitution, prefer to have it in the bylaws. And you need to understand that the reason for putting things into the bylaws is because this board can change the bylaws. And it can do it at the drop of a dime. On the other hand, if you put it in the Constitution, it takes a year and a half to two years to make a change. And sometimes you don't want to wait that long. So this is, it will be in the bylaws.
Bill, I was a motion maker, I would say that if you're okay going with the C B L's interpretation, I'd like to leave it that way. If we want to talk about more, let's discuss it some more and get more input. To, what's your preference?
I'm, Bill, I'll read in three. I'm not clear on, are you asking? We can talk about this later if that's what you were suggesting. No. Are you asking for my?
Let me apologize. So this whole process is strange. So we had a friendly amendment, I accepted that. But now it's what I call my, my motion language. I unfortunately didn't understand that you had some concerns on that topic before I agreed to accept it in entirety. I want to know, are you okay with it being the way it's been amended to? Or would you rather discuss it some more as a group or maybe remit it to something else?
Okay.
We can take a break if we need to also, I would imagine.
I'll repeat, I'm not stuck on the use of term on any particular semantic. If we want to call the four executive officers the Executive Counsel, that's fine, but there needs to be a different terminology to define the pool of candidates from which those officers are elected. We have to be able to talk about that group that will be elected by the membership. We've been referring to that throughout this entire process as the Executive Counsel as the new name for the Executive Committee, so to speak, right? If we repurpose that to mean only these four officers, it's confusing to me.
Go ahead, John.
Let me see, the way I interpret, and I could be wrong, the Executive Counsel is made up of four executive officers plus the rest of the people who have been elected to the Executive Counsel. So we're kind of confusing terms here. So the current, well, the new Executive Counsel would be taking the place of the current Executive Committee.
That is correct. If you want to call this the Executive Counsel, then Section One would need to say executive officers of the International Club shall be a president, a vice president, a recording secretary, a treasurer, and, help me with the number, six, I think. We've been using the term directors, other individuals who are in that council.
May I ask a question? Are you considering the others on the Executive Counsel as executive officers? Or are you just referring to the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer as executive officers?
The latter is correct. Just those four individuals are the executive officers. But all 10 are members of the Executive Counsel. By the terminology we've been using so far, which is subject to change, but that's what my point is.
If this section is titled the Executive Counsel, the friendly amendment that was accepted is still okay because the Executive Counsel is the executive officers plus the four or five or whatever.
Six.
Okay, and then what is done in step number two is they have specified who the executive officers are, which are specifically those four positions.
That is also correct. So Section One would include an amendment or in addition to the end of that, that says, in addition to, and a treasurer, comma, and six, and now might be the right time to name them, directors.
Not necessary.
Or six other council members who do not hold executive positions, but however you want to say that.
In the previous article, Article Seven, you say, Section One, Article B A, the International Board of Trustees is composed of two membership components. One is the Executive Counsel, semicolon, 10 members elected at large by the membership. Second, the 12 regional presidents of W B C C I. Now, in Article Eight, Executive Counsel, Section One is simply saying the Executive Counsel is the administrative body of the International Club. Section Two, the executive officers of the International Club shall be a president, a vice president, a recording secretary, and a treasurer.
You're saying you add a new section?
Yeah, I apologize, Bill. I should have said that. I didn't say it. It's, Matt did it right. I stated it incorrectly.
I would be fine with that. We're down to wordsmithing at this point. But you, you understand what I'm saying, that we cannot, without changing the definition of the word, we can't use the word council without considering the six.
Correct, correct. It was a misunderstanding as to what was accepted as a friendly amendment, so.
We're good?
We're good.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Larry Madden.
Larry Madden, where you just said, President, how many friendly amendments can we have? Okay.
As many as we need.
I'm asking Eric, First Vice President, would you be considerate of taking the two consecutive terms of any office down to one term of two years to the office? And in other words, each officer has one two-year term. I'm just very uncomfortable with somebody potentially being in that position for eight years.
I'm not opposed there, I'm just processing my wife doesn't look at my face. So can you restate your original concern, you say it's lower than when it was a while ago?
My original concern was that just a potential, a president could be elected during a real fine job, and he or she is elected for a second term. So that's four years in the office of president. Then they move to the immediate past president for two years. Unless the next president coming up is re-elected for two terms, and then you'd be the immediate past president for four years. So that's my concern, somebody could be in that position for up to eight years and the immediate past president having to vote, whereas president only has a vote based upon time.
Okay, I understand that. Who do you refer to, some people who are deeply involved in transition? Do you either, you have a sense of what that discussed and what the special committee intention looked at, any insight you can provide?
Brad Burries, Regional Board President. It was, thank you. It was discussed. And there was discussion about the fact that maybe the, to solve the concern that Larry has brought up, maybe the International Past President is still part of the Executive Counsel who does not have a vote.
This was, Eric, just for a minute. This wasn't part of the transition committee, this was part of them evaluating this to do it. The transition committee is not discussing that part of it, they're going through what the other special committee did. So we need to follow that to make sure it's not the transition committee. It's our first special committee with Jim Gock in charge of it then that did this, okay? They came up with a four-year term.
Yeah. Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. President, I would correct, the transition team of which Brad and I were members along with Doug and several other individuals, Johnny and, I'm sorry, I can't remember, Barbara, were passed the proposal as it was finalized to go to transition. It doesn't really matter what we thought of that, our task was to figure out how to implement it. In point of fact, we do support it, but it would be up to this I B T to decide if we want to entertain Larry's suggestion.
Go ahead, Lori.
I have a comment than we have online. Lori Kummer, Corporate Manager. I understand what Larry is pointing out, but I also believe in the process as in believe in the restructure of the I B T that if somebody is sitting in a position and they're not fulfilling their duties, that we have the mechanisms to remove them. And so I honestly don't believe that that position would become stagnant or, and then I, on that purpose, sorry. Schnetler is on.
Jennifer Schnetler? Sorry about that.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
This is Jenny Schnetler. I was on the original team. And I would like to make a comment about why did that evolve to extended terms with the potential for the International Past President to remain on as, to create an eight-year term? How it all evolved, and I have to share with you guys, this took us a long time, this very issue. Because it does have the potential of, yikes, what if you got somebody really bad in there? But therein lies the suppleness and the beauty and flexibility of the way we've structured this in that you can act on it. You're not locked into it. And so let's say we had a really great person serving as president and everybody said, you know, this person's got some great, great perspectives, some great points of view, and we really want to share another two years with this person as president, let's continue them on. Right now, there's zero avenue for an existing president to ever become president again. And then they really lock out some extraordinary talent. So in the effect of extending the terms to two years and saying, well, we could allow somebody, but the whole point is that they would have to be selected, voted and approved by the membership. So it's not this automatic extension of an office into an untenable amount of time. It is all contingent upon completely the performance that they do. And if it's an extraordinary performance, why would you want them gone?
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Ken Johansson, Region 11 President. I'm a little bit confused here. The other day, the six members are elected to the E C, correct? By the membership?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding of the day was the six were supposed to be region presidents. Did I misunderstand that?
I'm sorry, Ken, before I ask that, can you just restate it and make sure I understood the question accurately?
The other day, I, my understanding was that six region presidents would be on the Executive Committee. Where did I get that from?
I don't, I don't know. To my knowledge, the proposal has always been that the I B T would be comprised of the 12 people from the regions, the 12 regional presidents.
I got that. I got that.
Will be not those 12. So in addition to, it's not those 12.
So the six are going to be elected by members?
It's 10, but yes, yes, everyone on the Executive Counsel would be up for election and selected by the membership body. And then once on that, Executive Counsel, the I B T Board would select the executive officers with the President, Vice President, Treasurer, Recording Secretary.
Okay, I'm going to have a really dumb question here. You have to excuse this. But what's the difference between electing members of the E C and electing the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, all those positions? What is really the difference?
Okay, I think I can answer some, but if I answer, not what you're asking, let me know. So one of the tenants of this is that the membership body gets to pick the people that go on to the Executive Counsel, that group of whatever.
I understand that.
And that's it for the membership. Then once they're on that, if they do a good job, if they have the skills sets, then this board selects from that group the people who will be the executive officers, the president, the vice president, the secretary, treasurer. So the difference is only that the membership elects onto the board and the board picks from that who are the executive officers. Answer the question, Ken?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Yep, John Leake first.
Thank you. John Leake, Cal State Airstream Club, former Region Three President. I don't quite get all this, so I don't have a real good question, except maybe are we trying to fix something that's not broken? Trying to find qualified people? I didn't even know we had any unqualified people. So I just don't quite get what all this is about. Let's, let's don't fix something that's not broken. I mean, I'm not, I don't, I've not been in the club a long, long time, but I thought it was clicking along pretty good. And anyway, I appreciate the time. That's, that's all I had was a comment. Thank you.
You're next.
Jeff Dow, Rumpel, the Arkansas Razorback Club, along with Larry. I would like, the question that I have is that once you have been elected to the Executive Committee, the 10 members that are elected and you're chosen from those within that committee to be one of the international officers, does that change your term on the Executive Committee? You were elected in the first term to be a member of the committee and then you are chosen to be president after a year, it spells out. So are you only president for another year and then you have to be reelected and re-chosen? Or does that change, because if you're not, you're automatically granting someone another term to which they were never elected. They were elected for a two-year term.
Thanks, John. I will answer this in two ways. One is what I understand the intent of the special committee was. Second, I'll answer where I see the need, a great need for clarification. So the intent of the special committee was simple in that we want to give two-year terms. So think about how this started. We want to give two-year terms. That's actually pretty straightforward because two-year terms are two-year terms and you go election by the members again. Simple, much like our original president, but with the ability to extend to. Where it got complicated for the special committee was the interest in a requirement for one-year prior service on the Executive Counsel to be eligible for a executive officer position. And that, Jeff, sets up your question. Where we're saying if Joe and Mary gets elected to the Executive Counsel by the members and she really wants to run for president, she has to wait a year. And then she can run, and then this is a two-year. And the way it's written right now, it says that the clock resets. So it would say that you've got your one year on to the Exec Council. And then if elected by the Board, you will get your two-year executive officer position. And after that, you're back with two-year terms. That's what it says now. But that is the complication. I personally don't have a position on this. I would look toward the founders, you know, like what this board would want to do. I personally don't have a position, but I strongly believe it needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, not to put too much civics class in, it would be representation. I mean, you were elected. I mean, you haven't, you were elected to a two year term and it it only lends itself to to cloud the issue, as Larry has stated, that you could serve unlimitedly on the board by moving around within the officer in that international officer structure at the at the.
There's a simple.
The board, the Executive Committee.
Simple fix to this, the motion maker, when we get ready for a break, I can make it right either way. First, either remove the one year prequalification, which fixes that fundamental problem.
Right.
Might be unique from other boards, the one year, because most boards don't have a a one year requirement to be eligible for consideration. But that's, I can take that out, or if the board wishes, I can leave it in and basically be clear that that resets the clock. And so really, it's three years for your first time going in. The other attribute to that is that the, I'm not pointing to you guys, there was an interest in some of the region officers of saying that your service on here is is the one year. I'm just going to point to a region officer over here. One of the region officers says, you know, I've been on the I B T for a year now and now I want to run for president. I fulfilled my one year experience on the I B T and I can go for two years. So there's all these little exceptions in there. That's what's kind of complicating it. We need to clarify it one way or the other.
Yeah, just something that sets it out. And I also support the changes that Matt made, because there was ambiguity in the what role the region presidents might play in the future. When the Executive Committee was fully formed, would they still be able to govern the club? And I like the language that Matt proposed, that they are the governing body and the new E C is is only administrative. I think that's a good thing.
Thank you. Chris, you're next.
For Set five, Region five. Okay, let me go back to Matt. Did you accept Matt's?
Yes.
Okay, so we're changing the names on Article eight. Okay.
I hate to be very specific, because it's kind of confusing.
So. Right.
Article, Article eight is now titled, in my motion right now, as it stands.
Okay.
Is entitled Executive Council.
Okay.
There isn't, no longer titled Executive Officers, it's called Executive Council. There is an additional Section one.
Right.
Which Section one remains. Additional Section one just states that the Executive Council is administrative body of an international club and so will receive daily operations. So it's inserted.
Okay.
That's the motions down.
Okay. And then, like you stated with him, if you come in, if the directors, quote unquote, directors come in, okay, and then you elect one of those to be the President, the Vice President, that was my other question. Is that going to reset the time? Because basically, you're coming in with the two year, two years that I, you know, that's not giving the membership the chance, you know, to reelect you after that. And does the I B T elect it every two years, every one year? Or does that have to be in the policy? Okay, that's my question. Bust it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Karen Fisher?
Karen Fisher, International Third Vice President. I understand all of your questions and all of your concerns and a lot of those same questions and concerns came up in my mind when we, when I first heard this. The problem is, we're getting into the how we do things. And that's, and so we'll have an opportunity to look at all of the how we do things when we get to the bylaws and policy changes. Should this get approved by the delegates, that is all going to be at the I B T meeting on July 30th. So they're all great things and we need to take notes and we need to understand them. And I encourage you all to read those revised bylaws and policies when they come out and make sure that all your concerns are addressed. But we really don't want to fine tune that in the Constitution, per Tom Smithson's mantra.
Thank you, Karen. So I I fully agree with Karen. I got lost in it.
I fully agree with Karen. I got lost in it. The Constitution did not address any of this. It just says there is going to be a President, Vice President, two year term. It doesn't address the one year, because that's a bylaw. That would be something that, as President Abbott said, would be considered for the next three or four months by the team who is going to start to look at the bylaws. I think that will determine the transition time and they'll make some of those decisions. Go ahead, Larry.
Larry Madden, this is, Eric, I'm not sure I got my question answered. Were you, or I missed it, were you willing to change that one to your term, two from two to one?
Just in, in, just to speak, which which particular section? Just to make clear.
Sorry. Said, no, no. No officer shall serve more than two consecutive terms in office, of course, each term is two years. So I would like to see that changed to one to your term as opposed to two. I mean, if you're willing to do that.
Larry, I don't feel I can. This was a huge part of the remediation from the Special Committee and I don't feel I can make that change.
Okay. Thank you.
As it's still being Eric's motion at this point, he's not willing to change, which is okay, which is okay. No, and I understand your your reasoning. But if Larry wishes to pursue this, then he can turn that into a motion and then this board would vote on that motion as to whether you want to leave that statement in or you want it reduced to one term in any office.
Okay. Exactly right. Thank you.
Matt, go ahead.
I'm a member of the Constitutional Bylaws Committee. As term and I have read the motion and the amendment is currently worded, each term has an executive council now, regardless of whether they are an officer, is two years. If you are elected with the wording that's currently in the in the amendment, you would be elected to the Executive Council for two years. If you serve a year, then are named as an officer, you will serve as that officer for no more than one year unless you're reelected to the council. That is the current wording in the proposed amendment.
Yeah. Larry, then, six president. Okay, how I'm reading is no officer shall serve more than two consecutive terms in any office. So that would mean, as I read it, whether it be the Vice President, President, Secretary, Treasurer, cannot serve more than two consecutive two year terms.
So the council membership is what's elected to a term. And while the I B T selects the officers from among the council, they still have a two year term on the council, of which a year has passed, they can be elected as an officer by the I B T.
I understand.
The council members first.
I understand that, yeah.
Okay, we've now run a 20 minute limit on this discussion. We still want to continue discussing this further. Okay, we'll go for another 20 minutes. Okay? 20 minutes, that blue card comes up. Thank you. Okay. Any more questions? Go ahead, Bill?
No, well, not on the closed amendment. I'm just waiting my turn.
So the proposal amendment is going to be, like you said. If anyone else wants to offer a friendly amendment, I believe now is the time. That's the time we're doing.
Well, Region three, I would like to offer a friendly amendment that we, in Article eight, section, I'm sorry, let me get to it. I was, okay, in Article seven, section five, I would like to append the words, or in an office, comma, other than that of President, comma, in a W B C C I entry club, that would cause section two to now read as follows. Section five, a member of the Board of Trustees shall hold no international, regional, or local club office or position, other than that office or position which places him on said board. Nothing herein contains to disqualify an international officer or region officer from service upon standing or special committees, or in an office, other than that of President, in a W B C C I entry club.
Yes, I I accept that. I I accept that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Good choice.
So that you have it, so that Eric can add that.
Okay, is there any other questions from the audience or anybody else? Any other friendly amendments that need to come forward?
Any other ones?
This motion will require a majority vote in the affirmative to pass. The motion proposes forward into the Constitution delegates meeting in July of 2022, a constitutional amendment to delete Article seven officers and their election, and Article eight Board of Trustees, and insert a new Article seven Board of Trustees and Article eight international officers. Are you ready for the question?
You made some change, so. Article eight has a new name, Executive Council.
Just the last part.
Just the last.
So instead of international, Article, international officers, section eight would read Executive Council. Do I need to read that whole thing again for you folks? You understand that? Okay. Are you ready for the question?
This is not what we should be doing, but it's a new process. Larry, do you want to make the vote? Okay.
Okay. The vote is now on motion one dash R one as read and amended, okay? Without objection, motion one dash R one as amended will be approved.
Objection. Christopher Set five.
Okay. Okay, we need a roll call vote will be done in random order sequence.
Nope. Can you hear me now?
We turn it off.
Sorry, I'm hitting the wrong thing. First, I was President, Eric McHenry.
Yes.
Region nine, Bill Miller.
Yes.
Region eight, Greg Badner.
Yes.
Region six, Larry Madden.
No.
Second VP, Pear Hamquist.
Yes.
International Recording Secretary, Linda Shelton. No. Region 10, Kathy Gecksey.
Yes.
Third VP, Karen Fisher.
Yes.
Region two, R J Marquette.
Yes.
What did he say?
Yes.
He said yes. Region 11, Ken Johansson. Region five, Christopher Seplek.
No.
Region one, Doug Hart.
Yes.
Region seven, Jane Carmichael. Immediate past President, Andrew Selkinger.
Yes.
And three, Bill Wild.
Yes.
Region 12, Laverne McHenry.
Yes.
Region four, Brad Briggs.
Yes.
The break.
Hearing of the motion one dash R dash one is approved and be forwarded to the membership. Okay. Yes. We're going to take a 10 minute break.
Executive committees at the international, region, local club, intra-club levels, and designated leaders of national rallies and caravans, the authority to set health and safety policy, including vaccination policy, for rallies and caravans under their immediate jurisdiction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Laverne. Please read your proposed impact, background and financial impact statement, please.
The purpose impact statement reads, "Transfer of decision-making in regards to health and safety policies, including vaccination policy, to the governing board/leaders of events who are most knowledgeable about the venues, events, geographical and transportation risks, et cetera, of specific rallies and caravans that may pose a higher level of exposure to attendees. For events where the governing board/leadership believes local or state policies insufficient, no additional policies need be applied." Background statement reads, "Current policy that proof of COVID vaccination or exemption from vaccination may not be used as a prerequisite for attendance at any official ACI/WB/CCI event was adopted prior to knowledge of the impact of COVID on rallies and caravans. The significantly more contagious Delta variant impacted the health and safety of and rally participants, which necessitated a review of the policy." Eric McHenry, excuse me, Eric McHenry co-sponsored. Financial impact, if this motion is approved at the winter IBT, and changes in policy for individual rallies/Caravans follow, all maintain and registration information must be clear about the vaccination policy at a specific event. If a vaccine policy for a particular event is not announced until after registration and would prevent someone who is already registered from attending, a full refund will be issued. With long waiting lists for caravans and rallies, as anticipated, this will have minimal financial impact.
Are there any questions to discuss concerning this motion from the board? I agree.
Yes, Greg Badner, Region 8, I have a friendly amendment I'd like to read. I'd like to read the entire thing, just so there's no confusion. First part is the same as Kathy's original motion. "The Airstream Club International urges all regions, clubs, and intra-clubs to follow their local health and safety guidelines, including COVID guidelines for any gatherings, rallies, or caravans. Additional health and safety policies, including vaccination policies, for specific events are at the discretion of the executive committees with approval of two-thirds of their members voting on the vaccination policy at the region, local club, and intra-club levels. Additional health and safety policies, including vaccination policies for national caravans are at the discretion of the designated leader of the national caravans after consultation with the national caravan leader. Such policies must be part of the caravan registration process." I might mention, some of you have a printed copy. You should strike the word "international," it's in about the middle of the paragraph. If you don't have printed, that is not part of my motion.
Okay, any other board members?
That was a friendly, that was a friendly motion. Kathy, if she's willing to accept that.
Kathy, are you willing to accept that?
I'm willing to accept that.
Okay, any other board members with questions? First, we'll go to Brad Briggs.
I'd like to hear one more time. It was read to me, you can read it, I'd like to hear one more time.
Can you reread the friendly motion one more time?
And could you maybe start with what's being added? Tell us what's being added and then read it.
Yeah, let me pull it up on my screen here. I'll read the first part, it's the same. "The Airstream Club International urges all regions, clubs, and intra-clubs to follow their local health and safety guidelines, including COVID guidelines for any gatherings, rallies, or caravans. Additional health and safety policies, including vaccination policies for specific events are at the discretion of the executive committees, and this is new, the following is new, comma, "with approval of two-thirds of their members voting on the vaccination policy." And then it goes back to the original, at the, and then we strike "international" at the region, local club, and intra-club levels. And then the rest of this is new. "Additional health and safety policies, including vaccination policies for national caravans are at the discretion of the designated leaders of national caravans after consultation with the national caravan leader. Such policies must be part of the caravan registration process."
Go ahead, Eric.
Mine was essentially the same as Brad's, just to, I just spent a long morning apologizing, just because it's important to understand. What's the gist of it? Not the language, what's the gist of it? Not the language, just the gist of the amendment.
The gist of it is to, I would say, allow local decisions where the decision-makers are closest to the issues, where their event or rally is going to be held, and what their membership would be interested in, propose events. If they do propose a vaccination policy, it would then have to be approved by two-thirds of the members, all members being given an opportunity to vote, but two-thirds of the actual voters. And then, as far as the, and that would hold true for regional, intra-club, local club rallies and events. The caravans, I've separated out into a separate section because they are somewhat distinct and different, and they move across the country in different circumstances. So in that case, I'm proposing that the caravan leader have the authority to designate a COVID policy for that caravan after consulting with the national caravan leader. And I would assume that whoever, whether it's John or anyone else, would have a good discussion with them, and it would come out with a proper policy. I trust our leaders. And the important thing there is that if they do implement a COVID policy, immunization policy, that it be clearly stated in the registration process. The benefit of that is, you're not going to have a situation where people enroll in the caravan, and then at the last minute, they drop out because, oh my God, they're not all going to be vaccinated, or, oh my God, they're all going to be vaccinated, or even worse, they get into the caravan and then drop out because of some issue. It's clear upfront, they don't want to do it, they can go on another caravan, do a different event. So that's the rationale.
Mary, do you have it?
No, I'll just wait until you put it there.
Karen?
Greg, Kathy, I would like to suggest one change, and this is really just a clarification and use of popular terminology, but rather than national caravan leader, he's actually the chair of the National Caravan Standing Committee.
I'm not perfectly willing to comment.
I just don't want somebody to say, well, who's this national caravan leader? Where's the national caravan going, whatever, so.
I'm new here, so I'm fine.
Any more questions from the board? From the, go ahead.
Is there an opportunity to hear from the national caravan chair?
Want to get down to you, yes, okay. The, from the region vice presidents? From the audience?
John Becker, I'm the, uh, Chair of the Caravan Standing Committee. No, I would say, it's, as I said two days ago, this isn't an easy issue.
Put on your mic, please. Thank you.
John Becker, I'm the chair of the Standing Caravan Committee. As I said two days ago, this, this isn't an easy issue for all of you or for leaders of rallies, but also especially caravans. And I, I'm happy with the amendment that the caravan leaders can consult with me. And as I said two days ago, while not every caravan leader would require vaccination on their caravan, they feel they should be able to make the call based on the nature of the activity, where they're going, how long it is, et cetera. And, and I still stand by that. And I, with the amendment, you know, I'll consult with the leader on, on what the right call is. I, I do get some favorable feedback on using the saying, "two-thirds", you know, of polling the people who are signed up and saying, okay, if more than two-thirds want to do this, as at a rally, or if a local club was having a rally and had the same decision, can work, because I do also like getting that feedback from the members. And I think in some cases, two-thirds would say, yeah, that's, that's what they want. So it's, go ahead. Yeah, Sarah.
How can you consult to two-thirds of members who have yet to sign off before they present the policy that applies to a particular caravan before it's possible? We don't know.
True, but what we would do is, you know, for this year's caravans, people have registered. And so the first thing a caravan, if this passes, the first thing a caravan leader, if it required two-thirds is, you know, you could, you can, like, for Cajun caravan, Peter Schwartz, the leader, would go to, here's all the people who are on the list, most of them have already paid, and have to go through and say, get all the feedback. And, and I've recommended one person, one vote, because we do have a lot of single travelers on caravans. So doing it one person, one vote, and if two-thirds say, we want this to be that way, I know in my discussions with Peter, he's in favor of doing that, of, of requiring vaccination. And in, in that way, then if it was more than two-thirds, we would then quickly, fortunately, that caravan has a long waiting list. So if, since there are perhaps, if, if our club demographic is similar to what the CDC says about the country as a whole, just over 90% of people who are aged 65 to 75 are vaccinated, you ought to expect 10% of the people who have signed up on the caravan to say, well, I can't go now, so you have to issue me a refund in line with the policy that was set. And so there would be a, especially for the early caravans, like Cajun in March, like Roland to the Big Easy, Springtime in Kentucky, all the ones that were on the list that are in my report, because it is roughly chronological, there would be a scramble then to bring people in from the waitlist as quickly as possible. But it would have to be broadcast, this was the decision, the caravan participants.
Okay, thank you. Hold on, I got Joe Peplinsky on the Zoom call.
Hi, Joe Peplinsky, Historical Committee Chairman, member of the Southeastern Michigan Airstream Club. I have trouble with the wording of the friendly amendment that was just posed, where it was talking about a vote of two-thirds of the members. I would interpret that mean, if you want a policy on a national caravan, you need two-thirds of the members of the international club to vote on that. If it was a region activity, you'd need two-thirds of the region members. If it was a local club activity, you'd need two-thirds of the members of the local club. I think that needs to be reworded to be participants. People have signed up for interest, but using the word "members" is far too broad.
RJ was next. Hold on, RJ. Kathy, we do accept that friendly amendment.
Can you paraphrase that a little bit for me?
So can you paraphrase that for her?
It's hard to paraphrase, because I can't remember the friendly amendment that was read, but it, it asked for a two-thirds of approval of all the members, not of the participants or the people that have signed up for the activity. I'm not sure what the right term is, but I think "members" is far too broad.
It should be two-thirds of the participants, Kathy, instead of the membership. It should be two-thirds of the participants.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we're, as far as my friendly amendment, the caravans are separate and there's no vote. I mean, there's a consultation and so forth. When John talked about the possibility of a vote, was that a friendly amendment, John? Or was that just a conversation? Because that is a critical issue. And currently, what's on the floor is just not including the caravan members' vote.
So what you did as a friendly reminder does not have the caravans making a vote on it. It's up to the leader and to the international chair for the caravan. That's their decision. So you wouldn't need two-thirds of the vote of the caravan, is what you're stating.
What I'm saying is, the two-third vote is for region, local club, and intra-club rallies and events. The caravans is up to the discretion of the caravan leader with consultation with the national caravan chairman. And they also must publicize that or make that clear in the registration process. I think John has a good point about the caravans that are already. I had some other, trying to have participants voting, of caravans voting, it became very complicated, because generally, you would register, you would want to know that at registration.
Right.
So it's kind of a sticky issue.
Okay.
I'm okay with the amendment, with the amendment as a trip, that caravan leader can decide, and it will, and it will, it will be for, since the caravans are pretty much full for this year, you saw the list, and it will be, the caravan leaders will have to go out and communicate that the leader has consulted me, and here's the decision for a specific caravan, and give an opportunity then for people who say, well, I'm, basically, if, if the decision is, it can go both ways. If they say, I'm not going to require, and I know, I know there are some leaders who would do this, I know there are some leaders who would not do this. They would say, I'm not doing it no matter what. There may be people who say, well, then I go on off the caravan, because I'll go on one where it is being required. So.
I would like to point out, Mr. Chairman, this does not require a different COVID policy. This is just if the local club or if the caravan leader feels that it's important to do that. So in many cases, nothing will change from today.
But I, but I would say, he reiterates in something that many of the leaders have told me, it is very important that we emphasize, we will follow the local rules, and caravans go through many jurisdictions, and that that should be the expectation of everybody on the caravan. And, and if you're not willing to do that, you shouldn't go on the caravan. And the caravan leaders very much support that, because then, if you don't like the indoor mask rule in a state like New Mexico, it's not the caravan leader who decided that, it was the Department of Health with the governor who decided that, and, but we will follow the local rules.
Okay, thank you. Okay, RJ Dominic.
Y'all know my opinion on this. Y'all know my opinion on this, I'm not going to reiterate it. If this policy goes through and the caravans or local government vote or decide that they're going to do this, who is going to be the one to police us? I don't need comments. If you require to get the COVID card, does that person who requires it or club, do they realize that they're becoming the caretaker of your medical records? COVID card's a medical record. It is still accessible. You can still get information off of it from when you first got it. What happens if the medical records, that COVID card information is lost, or your computers hacked? Who's going to be responsible for it? What happens if you get a discrimination grievance? Because somebody is torqued, because they got kicked off because they don't have the vaccination. Maybe they can't get a vaccination. Okay, maybe they have a medical reason they can't. I'm not talking about religious exemptions. I know people who cannot get it because they have a medical condition that prevents it. Are we going to require flu shots? We all know that the flu is more deadly than COVID at times. My last comment is, no matter if you're vaccinated or not, you can still get COVID, you can still be a carrier, you can still spread it. Okay, look around in this room. How many people, if we're going to do this, are we going to require everybody in this room to be wearing a mask? That's what it comes down to. Ask these people, do they want to wear a mask? You can see who's wearing a mask and who's not. Thank you.
Matt Hackett.
Matt Hackett, Southeastern Camping Unit and Caravan Leader, North to Alaska. I want to read a portion of our code of ethics. "Be ever mindful of what we say or print with respect to the effect on others, so as to avoid disharmony and ill feelings among club members." I believe this gives us a lever for two-thirds or more of the membership of any given group to cause disharmony with others who may not feel the way they do. I believe that getting the vaccine, getting the shot is a personal choice that we all make or choose not to make, and that it is not my job to protect someone who chose not to get it or could not get it. It is my job to protect me, and I've made that decision. And so I would encourage you all to vote this in the negative and not implement additional requirements that health officials and government officials have not already imposed. Thank you.
Sarah Fisher, International Third Vice President. I want to go back to Joe Peplinsky's comment about changing the word "members" to "participants." I never did hear whether they agreed to that or not, but I would like to suggest that you do not agree to it, because that implies that you can't get the vote until after everybody's registered. So it needs to be the membership of the local group, club, region, whatever, enable their members, say, for example, at this region rally, you know, vote yes or no for whatever a policy would be, and it's done before the registration stuff goes out, just.
Hold on one minute, please. Our 20-minute time limit is up. Would you like to carry this on for a few more moments on this?
Please.
Yes.
Okay, the next person up is Gail Herer. Another 20 minutes. Okay. Gail Herer, on the Zoom call, you're next.
Hi, Gail Herer, Alberta Saskatchewan unit and leaders of the Northern Lights and Polar Bears caravan. I would like to strongly recommend to the club that they change the wording from "the Airstream Club International urges" to "the Airstream Club International recommends to all regions, clubs, and intra-clubs to follow their local health and safety guidelines." I don't think "urges," I think it should be a recommendation from the club. And with the caravan, we have to follow, you know, our country, our province, and our local health rules and regulations, which right now state that in order to even cross the border into Canada, you must be fully vaccinated, you must provide proof of vaccination. So the Northern Lights and Polar Bear caravan will be run with only those people who are fully vaccinated. Also, the trip from Thompson to Churchill via, by, via rail, there's another requirement there that all, all participants must be fully vaccinated. And the same with our Churchill tour provider, all of the participants must be fully vaccinated. So there's, there's no two-thirds approval of participants, because that just will not happen up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Kathy Dacey.
I want to address a couple of the comments that were made over here. Precedent has been clearly set about.
Hold on, back to changing the friendly amendment from the word "urge" to "recommend." That's what we need to see if you're accepting that verb.
I'm accepting that.
Okay, hold on one minute, we've got some more of the people ahead of you, yes, that make comments yet, okay? Okay. Larry's next, and then you're right after Larry.
Larry, man, Regent's next president.
Okay.
Don't want to get into the weeds.
Not yet. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Larry, you're next.
Yes, I get into the weeds momentarily. First of all, power, real or perceived, is the most intoxicating thing on earth. Now, this motion clearly says, it gives the leaders of the national rallies, caravans, authority to set health and safety policies, including vaccination policies. So let's say for an example, that a particular rally decides that we want everybody to wear masks. So, one, how is that going to be enforced? Two, if you don't comply and they catch you with your mask off a couple of times, do you ask to leave the rally? And, and I know this is trivial, but it's, it's what we're getting ourselves into. The national policy we adopted last year, I think, covers this adequately. Again, local and state regulations and policies. I really think you're, you're opening a can of worms here, and it's not a good deal. Not that I don't care for people's health, mind you, but I think the club's setting itself up for a real issue.
Thank you. Lisa?
Hi, Lisa Sly with the Vintage Airstream Club. And I'm just coming back to that, from a, from an intra-club perspective, I'm still coming back to that two-thirds vote. Is it a vote? Is it a poll? Is it, is it after you sign up for, let's say, a vac rally? I'm still very vague what you mean by that, and I really think that needs to be clarified a lot better. And I don't agree with any of this topic. I think we should leave it the way it is. Nobody's business. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Kathy, you're next to talk.
Okay, no, I don't think I'm next, because I, I want to respond to some of this, but I think we.
You're the next one, you can speak now on, this is now under amendment you were trying to do. When you began talking about it without the amendment, friendly amendment. It's your turn to talk now.
Okay.
Okay.
So I want to respond to a couple of these comments in that, you know, the concern about, gosh, we've got control of, of people's medical records. Precedent has been clearly set. Concert, I'm trying to think of the big, the big one. They're now requiring proof, proof, you have to show your vaccination card. Restaurants, I ate at a restaurant recently, was not allowed to be seated until that. So, so this is not something that we're, we're leading the way on this. This is something that is established and is unfortunately become part of what we have to do to keep ourselves and others safe. I also, if, is this a time, can I share what the Caldwell sent to me? Is this an appropriate time for that? Okay, so I don't, I think a lot of you probably know Darlene and Bob Caldwell. They are members of Region 10 and have also been incredibly active in this club for a very long time. Darlene sent me an email a couple of days ago, and she said, please, please make sure that everyone understands this. This motion is about allowing leaders the decisions based on local circumstances, which may include hospital limitations and quickly changing local restrictions created not only by local legislation, but also by venues. This motion is not about dogs, limiting participation, nor establishing unique long-term rules. Caravan or rally leaders want events to be 100% full, want happy and healthy campers who can participate, fully not having to sit out, and no leader wants negative comments or complaints after an event. Participants appreciate clearly defined guidelines or protocols, be it parking, camping. be it parking, camping requirements, or COVID protocols. My final, final comment is the criticism about that the Airstream Club recommends, urges all regions, clubs and interclubs to follow their local health and safety guidelines, including COVID guidelines. That's part of our current policy. That's not, I literally copied that out of there. So that's already what we're doing. We're not, again, we're not bringing anything else in. I didn't dream that one up. That comes out of our local, our current policy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Come on.
This time I get to unmute myself. Joe Pepulinski, Southeastern Michigan Club, club historian. I'm sorry, the the, my previous comments got misinterpreted as being applied to caravans. I, I, I'm sorry that I don't see the words in writing of the friendly amendment. But the way I interpret the friendly amendment was for every club activity, we would have to poll all of our members and get a two thirds vote to either say vaccination is required, not required, or whatever. It sounds to me like you're forcing a two thirds vote for every activity this club will will put forth. And I don't think that's manageable. I'm not, I'm not talking for or against changing the policy we've got. I think the two thirds is totally unmanageable. It's forcing a vote for every activity.
Thank you, Joe. Cecilia, online on the Zoom call. Cecilia Stansberry.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I agree with Matt and several other people that have stated, I think this is a very dangerous area for, oh, I'm Cecilia Stansberry, past Region 12 president, current vice president of the Lake Tahoe Airstream Club. I live in a different area than a lot of you. We have very few restrictions in Nevada. We have very few cases in Nevada. I think that situation is in many areas of our country. There are many areas that are more heavily populated that do have stronger regulations. I think we should leave it the way we've done and leave it up to the local areas and what regulations. I know I've talked to several leaders of caravans and they've gone with what the policy is. I think we're leaving ourselves really wide open for people dissension in the club, number one. Number two, liability of the club. Because if two thirds of a caravan decides that they want everybody to have a vaccination card, that third of the caravan potentially could say, you know, I'm, I'm mad, I, you know, I, for one thing, can't physically maybe get a vaccination card. If there's an area like Gail Herrer said, Canada is another area that we have to get, go across the border, you have to be vaccinated. So you would not sign up for a caravan had you not had a vaccination. You would not have signed up for that caravan. But if you signed up for a caravan that you know is in an area where masks are required, possibly indoors or something. If you're not comfortable with that, you're not going to sign up for that caravan. But to make the requirement, I think, is really, really a dangerous policy for our club. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to extend this for 10 more minutes, and then we got to wrap this up, but we still have a few people that would like to talk. Sir, you're next.
Is this on? Is it on? I'm John Tibido. I'm just a member. I'm a past caravan leader, retired, I guess. I, I think you guys need to tread very, very carefully with this issue. Sitting in the back listening to this, it sounds like we're trying to turn ourselves into a police department.
Amen.
And as a past caravan leader, I don't want to go around to individuals and tell them whether or not to wear a mask. I don't want to look, look at people's vaccination cards to see what they've got. I would trust them to to tell me. I think it's very important to follow the rules and guidelines of the areas that we might be traveling in or having a rally in. But in order to turn this into a police type issue is very, very dangerous for the club, and I really would hate to see that happen. I think probably the existing rules are sufficient to take care of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Smithson.
Tom Smithson, speaking as a member of the Northern California Airstream Club. Unfortunately, this particular issue has become exceedingly politicized, which is unfortunate.
Can you stay near the mic, please?
I think that this issue has become exceedingly politicized, which is very unfortunate. Because really, it's the question of health and safety. That's really the issue. And it's also a question of responsibility, as I've said earlier in this, in earlier discussions about this. Health and safety is a part of the responsibilities of the club. We don't lead members into locations or activities which are going to endanger them in any way, shape, manner or form, or hopefully we don't. On the other hand, the fact that we have individuals within the club who are unvaccinated, who may potentially be a carrier of the COVID virus, and they are included in our activities, and they don't or are not responsible, the people who they're having this activity with, is to me a problem. This particular motion is not mandating anything of anyone. Nor is it asking for the entire 200 members of my particular local club to make a decision about whether our activities will be dictated by some COVID policy. It's simply saying is that if there is an activity, the participants of that particular activity need to have some input about the level of responsibility or the people who there will be associated. That's all it's asking. If it were a mandate, I probably could be objecting to it, but it's not. It's trying to give the members a choice in their relationships with the other members of a particular activity, be it a caravan, be it a rally, be it whatever. And I think that's valuable. We're not trying to be cops. I'm not going to go around and tell you that you should wear a mask because the local club, or pardon me, the local regulations, when you walk into a building, big sign on the door that says, you must wear a mask to enter here, and you don't wear one? I know what I'd like to do, but I won't do it because I'm not a cop. I just think that the person who's not wearing a mask is particularly irresponsible. And I don't have any respect for them, and I stay as far away from them as I possibly can. Because they could very well be a carrier of the COVID virus. Now, should we or could we not? We, we have a policy right now which says mandates, okay? It mandates that we can't do something. This one does not do that. What it does, it gives us the option, that local option, to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Millie, you're next.
Okay, first of all, I was a cop. You don't want to be a cop. There, trust me, it's not a happy. Excuse me, Millie O'Donnell, Southeastern Camping Unit president, for a cop. There's a couple of points I just want to make real quick before she starts waving flags back there. Number one, no offense to anybody, but my little vaccination card, you guys can see it, there's nothing on it, there's nothing you can get from it, except that I'm really not Millie, I'm Mildred. And oh, well, it's, it's not a, it doesn't have any of your on it, I promise. That being said, my daughter and her husband are both suffering from COVID. Knock wood, mild cases because they are fully vaccinated and boosted. It can happen. It happens a lot. We have a few members in our unit who have been vaccinated and have still gotten this delightful thing, which is hopefully on the downside. I've heard caravan leaders talk about, if you don't make a change to the current rules, we don't want to be caravan leaders anymore. I've also heard caravan attendees say, if you're going to tell me I have to do this, I'll just go on my own. I hate to see the club lose the money, lose all those big waiting lists for caravans, because people really do want to go. I think our current status is good. I really do. I think in a perfect world, we'd all be vaccinated and protected because, dear God, I love people. But it's not my job to tell you how to take care of your health.
Thank you. We're going to go to one or two more Zoom person, and Kathy, you'll be after him, okay? So Bill Bryan.
Hi, yeah, this is Bill Barham. I'm the president of the Piedmont Airstream Club in North Carolina. Just a couple of points. One, I don't see that this two thirds thing is manageable from any standpoint. As a club, how would we ever be able to solicit, you know, for a rally or any, any activity? Also, urge all the voting members to vote against this amendment. The current amendment covers everything. We can, you know, we talked about this extensively at, in at the last rally, at the last international in Lebanon. And basically, it's up to the individual to, to protect themselves and protect their health. As the previous speaker said, lots of people with, that are fully vaccinated or are getting COVID, or getting this latest variant. And for someone to say, well, if you're, if you're vaccinated, you're not going to carry any kind of, you know, you're not going to make me sick. Well, that's not true. You can still make somebody. You can still give it to somebody. So we just need to address this with the current policy. And, you know, going forward, if we went forward with this, what's the endpoint and what's fully vaccinated? At some point, I guess, I've heard that they're going to say, well, you get a flu shot, you get a COVID vaccine or a COVID shot at the same time. So are we going to have to prove that we had that shot? I think it's a slippery slope to go down. And one final point about caravans, and I've talked with John Becker, or he and I have emailed about this. You know, it was brought up that, well, caravan leaders take people to remote areas, and, and they're worried about making them sick in remote areas. The only thing I'd be worried about in a remote area is having a heart attack or some life threatening event. You're never so far away in this country that, that you can't get to a hospital or to some medical facility. And COVID is not a life threatening event immediately. I'm not saying that people don't die from it. But certainly, if you come down with symptoms of COVID, it's not likely you're going, you're going to die within the next hour. And certainly, you can get to some facility that can treat you or give you medications for this. So I urge, I urge the voting members to vote against this amendment and to vote for, to just keep it the same way that it is. Thank you.
Time limit is up on this again. End it again. Okay, our time limit. We've gone through almost 50 minutes on this discussion, okay? Do we want to extend it for another 10 minutes?
No.
Okay. More people on my list, and then that'll end.
Good question. Can we present the final revision of the motion for us to look at? I think part of the confusion right now is that we have a number of accepted amendments, changes to it, and we're like trying to keep all the balls in order.
So what we'll do is we'll vote for these two people that we have left. We will have Kathy read it with the friendly amendments in it. And then we will see it. Would that work for you? Because there's no way of us.
I was proposing perhaps that we can get it up on the screen.
Probably won't be able to revise it, and what we're looking at. There's no way, there's no way we can get it up on the screen, do it that way. Okay, Kathy, you can go ahead right now.
Pardon?
Go ahead. You had your hand raised earlier.
A couple of things that I think some people have missed on this, and it's a very important part of this, is that the additional health and safety policies, again, the very first of this was taken out of our current policy. Then I added additional health and safety policies, including vaccination policies for specific events or at the discretion of the executive committees. I'm not, if your executive committee says, you know, our membership doesn't care about that, we don't. All we're asking is that for the, the executive committees in regions where they do care about this, where they do want this implemented, that they have the option of doing it. Nobody is mandating anything on this. We are allowing our members in those regions that do care about it to have a say in how the rallies and caravans are run by the two thirds vote.
Thank you. Doug Hart, from Region 1.
Require? Not require. Not require. I didn't see the allow. I saw allow, but I didn't know. We're going to require the caravans.
Are we?
Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Direct open questions for me, please. Doug Hart.
Maybe this is the final comment, but from my observation, this is going to be a very close vote. And I think that in and of itself, given the nature of this topic, is going to be divisive, whether it passes or fails. And I wonder if Kathy would consider withdrawing the motion.
Kathy, you can answer that.
I will not withdraw the motion. Okay, I think I can get it up on the screen.
Just give us one minute. Can you do that?
Yeah, just a second.
We'll have it up on the screen for everybody to be there in a minute so they can see it. No, we're not taking a small break, okay? Trying to get it on the screen like you want it there. He's just changing, changes for us, we can do it. We're done with the comment section. This is, I said, after Doug Hart was done, we're closing it out. We'll put it up on the screen so we can read it, and that will be it. I'm sure that we can probably sit here all day and continue this discussion on for many more hours. Okay, we now have it up on the screen for everybody to see. Great, is it exactly what you wanted, a friendly amendment?
I'm trying to make it a little bit bigger.
Urges was changed, wasn't it?
Yes, we agree.
Kathy, did you accept the urgent to recommend it?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And did we go with participants or did we leave it with members? Because participants aren't till afterwards, and you want this done as part of the registration or?
We had it.
You originally said members.
Yes. And I'm not agreeing to change it. And that's not really for the caravan aspect of it. That's for the rallies, the local. Because again, you don't know who your participants are until it's almost too late.
Yeah, that's what, so that with the approval of two thirds of the members. Yep.
That looks correct? Can you see it now? Okay. Go ahead, Margaret. I know you want to talk.
I just want to be here all day, so if there's something else to talk to you, thanks. But for approval, two thirds of, why, why wouldn't we put organizers or rally hosts or, because that's who's organizing on the front end, right? We want to know what's happening on the front end. If we're in this town, we may have restrictions, that town not. So wouldn't it be the organizers setting these bars? Because then be, that's, who's going to set this up?
I feel that if it's the organizers that are doing it, and I'm just trying to understand what you're saying, right? It would be. It would be the members that are hosting this rally would be the ones responsible for the two thirds membership. Because after the participants come in and we've all been to rallies at the last minute, they come in and we got seven new trailers coming in, maybe you didn't sell out. That would throw off who did the vote on it or the regulations on, right?
Not, not what I was saying. What I was saying is that it would be whoever's going to organize, for example, this rally, whoever's organizing this rally needs to be the one to set the standard because of the area they're in.
Right, so it would be the region then for this one.
Ty, you didn't let her, him talk. Point of order. You didn't let him talk. You can't let her talk.
Okay, I'm good.
She's trying to change the wording out.
No, I'm good. I would drop. I would drop.
We'll drop. Yeah, okay. Everybody happy with what they see on the board up there? Or can they read it? Let me put it that way. Doesn't have to be happy. This is the way Kathy and Greg wants to bring it forward. That's correct? Vote for it, okay? Okay. So. Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Um, so. This motion will require a majority vote and the affirmative to pass. The motion proposed amending the current.
I thought we agreed instead of national caravan leader, we'll make the chair of the national caravan committee.
Standing.
Standing.
Yes, we.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Oh, that's a good point.
Committee.
Yeah, I gotta go back. And the chair of the international, national caravan. That's not how you spell standing.
That's a standing.
I'm getting there. Oh, yeah. Nice to know that.
That much to go for.
Last two.
Okay, caravan candy. Excellent caravan standing. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion proposed amending the current WBCCI COVID policy to allow executive committees at the international region local club. We're taking out international, I'm sorry. Region local club and inter club levels are designated leader and designated leaders of the national rallies and caravans, the authority to set health and safety policy, including vaccination policy for rallies and caravans under their immediate jurisdiction. Are you ready for the question?
Yes, I'm for the question.
Okay, the vote is now on motion number three as read. Without objection, motion number three as read will be approved.
Objection.
So we're down to roll call vote. Linda?
Here we go. Glad I printed up a lot of these.
The vote is now on motion number three as amended. Just correct that before we do it.
Okay.
No, Trevor's not here, so. Trevor's not on, right?
Okay. Region two, RJ Marquette.
No.
That only. RJ Marquette.
No.
No. Second VP, Pear Hamquist.
Yes.
International Recording Secretary Linda Shelton, no. Region twelve, Laverne McHenry.
Yes.
Region six, Larry Madden.
No.
Region eleven, Kent Johansson.
Yes.
Region ten, Kathy Deasy.
Yes.
Third VP, Karen Fisher, no. Region seven, Jane Carmichael.
Yes.
Region eight, Craig Le- Badner, sorry.
Yes.
First VP, Eric McHenry.
Yes.
Region one, Doug Hart.
No.
Region five, Christopher Seplek.
No.
Region four, Brad Riggs.
Yes.
Region three, Bill Wild.
No.
Region nine, Bill Miller.
No.
Immediate past president, Andrew Selke.
No.
This is a close one. The vote is eight yes, nine noes. Noes have. I do want to thank Kathy for working so hard on that, making so much of it into this.
Thank you.
Move on to motion four from Eric McHenry, request the granting of permanent club charter to the Grapes and Grains Interclub. Eric, please read your motion.
I move that the WBCCI International Board of Trustees grant a permanent charter to the Grapes and Grains Interclub per WBCCI policy sixteen dot six dot six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please read your proposed impact, background and financial statement.
Proposed impact, purpose slash impact, interclubs allow WBCCI members to share lifestyle interests such as vintage airstream, amateur radio, et cetera. The background on this one is Grapes and Grains is an interclub for members to share their interest in beverages that are produced from grapes and grains. People include beverages such as wine, brandy, spirits and beers, as well as recipes made from these beverages. Rallies and caravans will focus on tours to places that make these beverages, as well as enjoy venues that serve these beverages. The main objective of the membership is to share their knowledge about grapes and grains with others. The club will be open to all members whose interests lie within grapes and grains. Financial impact done.
Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? From the region vice presidents? From the audience? This motion will require a majority vote and the affirmative to pass. The motion requests granting a permanent club charter to the Grapes and Grain Interclub. Are you ready for the question? The vote is now on motion number four as read. Without objection, motion number four as read will be approved. Hearing none, motion number four as read is approved. Number five is from Eric McHenry, proposes granting a permanent club charter to the Future Streamers Interclub. Eric, please read your motion.
I move that the WBCCI International Board of Trustees grant a permanent charter to the Future Streamers Interclub per WBCCX policy sixteen dot six dot six, Interclub.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please read your proposed impact, your purpose, impact, background and financial statement.
Purpose and impact, interclubs allow WBCCI members to share lifestyle interests such as pitches airstreams, amateur radio, et cetera. Insights from Airstream Inc. has identified a booming number of airstream owners who occasionally are always travel with young adults and children. This segment of airstream owners also exists within WBCCI, driving the goal of forming an interclub focused on members traveling with youth, adults, young adults or children. Background, Future Streamers is a club designed to keep youth involved in our airstream adventures. Future Streamers Club is open to all members. Future Streamers are members that may travel with children. Our goal is to develop memories or use that excite them about airstreaming, provide lifestyle opportunities and building friendships through family from the engagements and experiences. Using a private electronic forum, rallies and informal social gatherings, our members can enjoy sharing common interests and challenges involved with traveling with children.
Yeah. Are there any questions or discussions concerning this motion from the board? Region vice presidents? Audience? This motion will require a majority vote and the affirmative to pass. The motion proposed granting a permanent club charter to the Future Streamers Interclub. Are you ready for the question? The vote is now on motion number five as read. Without objection, motion number five as read will be approved. Hearing none, motion number five as read is approved.
Hey over there. He's excited.
Is there any further new business? Hearing none, this January twentieth, twenty twenty-two IBT meeting is adjourned. We will now have announcements from the board members. Please be mindful of the time, really mindful. And a red card at the three minute mark. Let's start with region. What's with regions?
I remember Region Six President. I do not have any notes for dates and times of what's happening in Region Six presently with me because I didn't prepare for it. However, uh, last year, even though COVID was a concern for everybody, we had three major, four major rallies in Region Six. A special event rally which is held in Athens, Alabama, which is the old time Fiddler's Rally. Had about twenty-five rigs show up along with thousands and thousands of local people because that event has been going on for many years. This rally was reinvigorated because it kind of died on the vine. Russ Frye and his wife, uh, putting stuffs out there and they took it over for five years and it's been very, very successful. Right after that, we zoomed to the Region Six rally in Foley, Alabama, which was my first rally as a region president. And we had roughly fifty rigs show up. It's a really, really nice destination and we had a great time, uh, and eating food. And after that, we went to El Dorado, Arkansas, where Jan Hedner, my vice president, is chair of a region rally there. It's called the Airstream Town Square. And the local government in, um, El Dorado just rolls out the red carpet for us. And I would invite anybody to look into it because it's been moved October, it's much cooler, and we had a fabulous time. So that's it for Region Six. It's going to be kind of a repeat next year and we're looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Region Seven?
Thank you. I want to say thanks to the organizers. I want to say thanks to the volunteers, the facilities working out. And I want to look back just a little bit into twenty twenty-one. We had a rally. We had to cancel twenty twenty, so we just did a repeat. But we were lucky. President of the International Club, Ty Mont, came. Third vice president, Karen Fisher, came. And these members went, how the hell did you get them to come there? So I was arrested. I was put into handcuffs, right, right? And I was put into prison stripes. I was put on trial for murder. There was a jury and my man Eddie was on it. He voted guilty. Still paying for that one. I was released. They finally acquitted me and here I am. So the good news is in twenty twenty-two, we do have a first vice president, Ginger Slattery. You may call her Virginia or Ginger Slattery. She moved up. She was second vice president, uh, installed by Ty and by Karen. She was second vice president for two months. She's now been first vice president for two months. And she will soon be president. So I hope you'll all thank her when she's sitting in this chair. September twenty-two to September twenty-five, we have folks already registered to attend. And I get to dump, I mean, I get to hand it over. It'll be at the Jack Pine Lodge in the Hyawatha National Forest. And Ginger's still putting it together, seriously. Ginger has ten years or more as an airstreamer and came to it happily because she had, uh, tented and done a pop-up before that. So, thank you.
Uh, Region Eight?
Oh, shout it out for me, didn't I? Thank you, Greg Badger, Region Eight resident, and I'd like to introduce Greg Anderson, he's back there in the crowd, the first vice president, Region Eight. Like to invite everyone to our region rally. Parking starts on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh. It's at the Lancaster Event Center in Lincoln, Nebraska. Lincoln is a very vibrant area. And we invite everyone to attend. The opening will be Thursday morning and a run through Sunday morning. So everybody's welcome to come. Thank you.
Now you take care of her. She will be attending the rally.
We are going to welcome.
Okay, Region Nine?
Uh, Bill Warner, President of Region Nine. I'd like to introduce my first vice president, Nancy Fitzgerald. We also have a second vice president, Philip Vasquez. It's, uh, online, uh, listening. And I'd like to invite everybody to our first, uh, region rally for the last three years. We had to cancel the last two. April twenty-sixth to May first in Manola, Texas. And we're hoping that we'll be able to hold that one.
Thank you. Go to Region Ten?
At the Deasy, Region Ten. Uh, we had a very, very successful, uh, region rallies last year. Or, or I'm sorry, local club rallies. And this year, as far as I know, we already have fifty, um, scheduled for the upcoming. Our Region Ten rally is going to be June first through fifth, which is in Linden, Washington, which is just outside British, um, Vancouver, British Columbia. We sold out in thirty-six hours. Uh, there's a lot of pent up demand, uh, for rallies in our area for sure. And I think Terry shared with everybody that, uh, the Oregon Airstream Club, uh, have booked over five hundred sites for this coming year. And they, uh, are almost over fifty percent booked out on that already. I would, uh, like to thank both my first vice president, who is attending, uh, by Zoom, Darlene Caldwell. And, um, and then my second vice president is working full time, so she's going to get to listen to this, uh, on Zoom recorded later. But we had a great year last year. We're going to have another great year this year. So, thank you.
Region eleven? Nobody here?
No.
On screen? Ken, there you are.
There I am. Uh, Kent Johansson, Region Eleven, uh, president. Um, I want to, in particular, thank, uh, my great team that I get to work with, uh, during these past two years. In particular, Stephen Parr, who's attending the, who has taken the time to attend the, uh, the, uh, the, the rally here, uh, John Holly, our second vice president, Barb Actor, our secretary, Nancy Fisher, who is our treasurer, Karen Birdshear, who is our webmaster, and Bob Doster, who is our blue blood, blue beret, uh, regist- blue beret editor. We have two significant rallies within, uh, Region Eleven. One is Balloon Fiesta. Registration is going on this week. So far, we have three hundred and twenty-four, uh, registrations for a hundred and fifty spots. That's, that's going to be a challenge to, we do a lottery to, to. That's, that's going to be a challenge to, we do a lottery to to figure out who's able to go or not. Anybody who doesn't make the lottery generally is carried over to the following year. We also have our Region Eleven rally that's coming up in March and we have a hundred and fifty-five people signed up for a hundred and twenty-five spots. So, and we've got some really great entertainment lined up. We were, first night, we're doing a mariachi band in a taco bar. We're going to have a folk singer one night. We're going to have a Nashville, Nashville recording artist one night. And then the last night, we've got a nice dinner and a, one of Phoenix's premier rock and roll bands. And so it's going to be an epic event. And so got some great stuff going on in Region Eleven. Thank you.
Thank you. Region Twelve?
LeVar McHenry, Region Twelve. We have luckily or fortunately, weather unrest is pretty good for us almost here around. So we have not had to cancel our regional votes because we conducted everything outside. We did not, we would not come into a clubhouse. All our meals, everything is done outside. Happy hour, safe house, all that kind of stuff. So we've just come off a second year during COVID, having another successful region rally. A hundred and twenty, it was actually plus that rigs attended. We're going to continue to be outside the box. Next year, we are holding our region rally in September. It will be in San Diego. It's at the Bay Fair Underboat Races. So we've secured another hundred and twenty sites where people will back up to the Bay, the San Diego Bay and have front row seats to the boat races. So we're looking forward to that. Coupon's coming up pretty quick for registration. So if anyone's interested, it's September fifteenth through the nineteenth.
Thank you. Region One, Doug Hare?
Thanks, Ty. I'd like to thank Bard Fuller and RJ Dominic, Region One Vice President and Second Vice President respectively. They're both there in the room with you. Thanks, guys, for doing what I was unable to do. Region One is looking forward to welcoming a thousand airstreamers or a thousand airstreams to Freiburg, Maine, where earlier this week it was fourteen degrees below zero. I'm told it's going to warm up by July, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. We have a lot of rallies before and after the, the international rallies. So check out the website and feel free to join us. And lastly, if anyone is looking for local knowledge of the area, please feel free to reach out to me. And if I can't point you in the right direction, I'll sure connect you with someone who can. And thanks to all of you for putting on a great IBT.
Thank you, Doug. Region Two, RJ Marquette?
Hello, Region Two, President RJ Marquette. First, I'm sorry I couldn't make it. I was really looking forward to visiting Savannah for the first time ever. It looks like you guys are, had a really good rally. We are planning our Region Two rally, the first one since twenty nineteen. It'll be May nineteen to twenty-two. We're having a joint rally with the Vintage Airstream Club. It's at the Delaware State Fairgrounds in Harrington, Delaware. So we should be able to handle, unless like a thousand airstreams show up, we should be able to handle anything that, that does appear. My cat is interested. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Region Three, Bill Wild?
Thank you. I'm Bill Wild, Region Three. I would, well, first I'd like to say thank you, Ty, for choosing Region Three. It's about for your rally. We were glad to have you here. Want to say thank you very much to John Leek again. John told me that he ordered great weather for this week, but due to supply chain issues, it didn't. I would like to introduce Chris Baum, who is my one VP. And I believe, although I can't tell because I can't see the participant list, that Bobby Lee is probably online. He was for one of the earlier sessions. I don't know if he's here today. We are going to have a region rally in April from sixth to tenth April in Hiawassee, Georgia, which is at the Georgia Mountain Fairground. It is on Lake Shittu. We're calling it Silver on Shittu. It's just around the corner from Matt and Deb, Hackney's House. I would also like to say welcome Karen, who's going to be our region, I mean, our international representative. We're looking forward to having you there. Freiburg, of course, ends on the thirtieth of July, I believe. So if you're looking for something to do as soon as Freiburg is over, you have about a week to get to Galax, Virginia for the eighty-sixth Annual Old Fiddler's Convention, which is being hosted by Joe and Christine Baum in Galax. And there will be information on the web about that soon. I think it's already out there on the, on the event calendar. You don't want to miss that. That's, that is a whole lot of fun, especially if you have a taste for bluegrass music. We're planning on doing a caravan going up from the top of Georgia. Thank you. If anybody from around the North Georgia area wants to join in on that, just please holler out to me. And finally, shameless plug for my club, The Top of Georgia, is if you want a place to stay before or after attending that region rally, Top of Georgia would be happy to host you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Brad Brakes for Region Four?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would first of all, I'd thank the Region Four Vice Presidents, First Vice President Fred Keel, who's behind me. And Second Vice President Mike Passa, wonderful people to work with and very supportive of me. If you're in the Region Four area, which includes lower peninsula of Michigan, Ohio, West Virginia, in the spring, we will have our Region Four rally at Worcester, Ohio, which is about halfway between Columbus and Cleveland. And they're closing down their streets and opening up their town to airstreamers. And the registration just opened for all airstreamers, whether they're affiliated with the club or not. And I'm happy to say we are two-thirds full. So that's good news. Also, here around the Region Four area in the fall, just recently, change has been made at the Swiss Festival National Rally, which is the longest continuously scheduled rally in WBCCI. Frank Keel has agreed to run that rally and Region Four is now the sponsor of that rally. So we expect it to go on for a long time. And that is September twenty-fifth through October seventh. So always welcome. Please come to either or both events. We'd love to have.
Christopher, Region Five?
Christopher Seckel, Region Five. I'd like to thank my first vice president and you guys see him again on his second go around through region. You know, his region officer is Artie Martin. He's going to join this board in July. And since the last IBT, we've gotten our second vice president. I want to thank John Deegan from the Central Indiana Group for stepping up and continuing on the presidency here in Region Five. Also want to thank my wife for putting up with this, you know, going around the whole country. I love her to death and she puts up with me. So since our last IBT meeting, we've had our region rally in Warsaw, which I considering the two before, I was absolutely thrilled. The thirty-three trailers and sixty-two members showed up in Warsaw, Indiana. We had a great dinner. Dinner, boat ride, Lake Wauwasee up there. It was fantastic. Our next region rally is September fourteenth through eighteenth down in Madison, Indiana. Artie would gladly have you come. And, and that's a, probably a little bit of a week before Sugar Creek. So you can stop in down in Madison and go over to Sugar Creek after that. So that's all I have to say. Thanks. And thanks, John.
Tell me what Sugar Creek is.
Oh, if you don't know what Sugar Creek is, it was a national rally, now it's a region rally?
No, actually, it's national. Sugar Creek is where the Swiss Festival National Rally is held.
Okay, so, and thank John for everything he's done this week. Thanks.
Andy Selig?
I keep this short and quick to the point. I'm just going to say I thank everybody for being here. It's our service on this board. You know, a great group here and I know going forward that it's going to continue to get better.
Andy, exactly. Let's really give another shout out to the team back at HQ. Thank you for helping behind the scenes.
We don't know, but they've been working this whole meeting while we've been here. So appreciate them. And again, if anybody's Jackson Center, please stop at Headquarters and visit us. That's all. Thank you.
Wow, we made it. I appreciate you all so much because we were working through this together. It's a learning process for all of us. We will continue to learn and we will continue to help each other. This has been a great experience, I think, for all of us, a learning experience. And it just goes to show that we're all lifelong learners. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joanne.
Is it on? Is it on now? Don't you do but a red card. It's my time to shine. He'll pay for that dearly. Well, I was going to thank him, but I'm going to switch over to Lori and Joanne and thank them from the bottom of my heart for getting me through the first six months of this office, I think. And I want to thank my husband. He's my little chauffeur. And I don't think he's in here anywhere, so I won't say anything bad. But anyway, I love being here. I forgot the other night when we were talking. I didn't mention that I'm a second generation. My parents were members of this club. Long time. And I wish they were here to see this. I think that'd be incredible. All right, I'm going to shut up now.
Okay, Karen?
I want to compliment everyone today. Ty, great meeting. Joanne, I know you and Linda did a lot of work on seeing these Lori and the two are people at Headquarters. And then all of the officers that are sitting here online would dedicate a lot of time to be here. We listened well. We respected other people's setup. And we, we're going to go forward from here. So it's been great to work with all of you. And I'm looking forward to continuing now through the rest of this term and hopefully be asked.
Thank you, Karen. Here?
I'd like to, this is cool. I'd like to thank the organizers for this. It's fantastic. I would like to especially thank my friend John Lee for getting hooked on shorter introductions. I'd like to thank the team here for having a cordial discussion about sensitive topics like COVID and COVID. And I don't know whether the policy that was put in place before is a good one because it has support from the majority of the numbers. I'm looking forward to having the national rally. It's so close to home. It's been a first time in over forty years. So thanks again, everybody.
Eric?
Well, as I talk about what we've done since we saw you all last in Tennessee, y'all probably know that LeVar, I sound like a Region Six person now.
Y'all do.
I'm not wrong with that. Well, you know, so LeVar and I retired successfully less than a month ago. So we've been on the road. But, but we, we were able to drop into a southeastern Michigan airstream club rally, you know, after, after Tennessee. And we just picked a pin on the map and contacted the president at the time, the rally leader, and had just a wonderful time there. It was truly fantastic. And then we headed a little bit further south and did the same thing. We just picked a pin on the map and spent a wonderful weekend plus with the Pennsylvania Airstream Club in Pinewood. Again, through both of those places, we have no surprise to y'all, but to know, love a lot of new people in the club. We went to Little Palooza, had a fun time at that, over there by Jackson Center, great time there. And as I mentioned, the last three weeks, we have been pretty much three and six. We went to Canterbury. And it's been a wonderful week with some of the, the Region Six people after that. And of course, we're here now. We're going to be heading up to the pins rally of a region eleven. And then we're heading up through Washington. We may drop in on Region Ten if there's space, there's space for us on our way, way back east. I have to say, one of the highlights of our trip, and all that have been to Headquarters will understand this, we spent, I don't think we, we stayed longer than we were welcome. We were there about two or three weeks in and around Little Palooza, working with Lori and Deb and Barb and Amanda, you know, and Christie. And we really got to appreciate firsthand what they do. They provide a tremendous level of support and they put us to work. LeVar and I participated in holding new, new member pamphlets, these are the big glossy brochures. And when Lori told me that team did seventy last month, and I think we there probably twenty, it's really amazing and how much work your team does. So just a really wonderful time. Thank you, Ty. Thank you, John. Like Joanne said, this has been a wonderful experience this last few days with y'all. I think we learned a lot of things that I actually didn't think we'd work so, we worked through nearly as well together. So thank you.
I want to thank everybody for coming. I want to thank Chris's wife. She has dog sat my dog for two days during these meetings. And it's nice because I'm hoping she'll be exhausted from walking. I want to thank John and your team has done a tremendous job beyond what we were anticipating. Thank you very much. I want to thank RJ and E Two from Headquarters for doing all the sound stuff with Lori. We've gotten through it. I know we had some problems, but we seem to have worked those out. Seeing everybody up there in Maine. I mean, we're getting close on those totals. Come up and join us. It's going to be a lot of fun. And so I'm going to make this short and sweet now. Happy hour is bring your own with you. It's at five o'clock outside. Dinner is at six. It's a low country boil. They're closing this hall up at eight o'clock. Am I right, John? Okay, at eight o'clock, this will be closed up. We need to get out of here so RJ's team can break this down so we have a little bit more room for dinner tonight. So everybody, thank you very much for doing this. Have a safe trip home. I will be leaving early in the morning, so I probably won't see anybody after tonight.